I'm going to call to order the Planning Commission meeting. The date is August 19th, 2025, and it is 6:02 PM. So to start off the meeting, we are going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and Commissioner Hoffman is going to lead us.
Please stand and place your hand over your heart, and begin after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we please have a roll call?
Commissioner McNally. Commissioner Hoffman.
Here.
Commissioner Flaherty.
Here.
Vice Chair Zahn.
Here.
Chair Hirsch.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, moving on to item number four, approval of the agenda. This is time for the Planning Commission to discuss any changes to the order of agenda items. Do we have any suggested changes? No?
None.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Call for a vote.
Voting is open. Motion carries five zero.
All right. Moving on to the public comment portion of the meeting, this is the time for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on any items within the Commissioner's jurisdiction and on items where public comment will not be taken. The public is invited to attend and provide public comment. Public comments are limited to two minutes per speaker and shall only be taken from those present in the council chambers. No remote public comment will be taken during this time unless required by the Brown Act. A total of 30 minutes will be allocated to this initial public participation item. This time allotment may be modified due to time constraints at the direction of the chair. No action will be taken on matters raised during public comment, except that the Planning Commission may take action to schedule issues raised during public comment for future agenda. Speakers with comments regarding city management or departmental operations are encouraged to submit those comments directly to the Community Development Director or the City Manager's Office. Do we have anyone here that would like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda for tonight? All right, seeing none, I will close the public comment portion of the meeting and move on to item number six, consent calendar. The following matters will be acted upon collectively with a single motion and vote to approve with the majority consent of the Planning Commission. Planning Commission members may orally register a negative vote on any consent calendar item without pulling the item for separate consideration prior to the vote on the consent calendar. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a commission member removes an item from the consent calendar prior to the vote on the consent calendar item. Items removed will be considered under a later agenda item with only in-person public comment permitted at the time in the chambers. The title is deemed to be read and further reading waived if any resolution or of any resolution or ordinance listed on the consent calendar for introduction or adoption. Do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Madam Chair, I have a quick question maybe of staff. I think this is the first time we've ever had this kind of a determination as part of the consent calendar, new policy, or a change? Have I missed something?
This is Allison Becker, the Community Development Director. This is not a new policy. The item 6B, I believe you're referring to, has been determined to be not controversial and eligible for a consent calendar vote if the commission so decides. If you'd like to receive a presentation, we're prepared to do that.
Other than the fact that I'd like to say, three of us have been on the board of Murals for a decade, and we, I certainly would like to make this a consent.
In that case, I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Noting that we reserve the right to pull things in the future. Sure.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Can we have a vote?
Voting is open. Motion carries five zero.
All right, we're going to now move on to item number seven, the public hearing portion of the meeting. The first item up for review is item 7A, request for CUP amendment, APE 25-002, located at 2515 Pacific Coast Highway, to expand an on-sale alcoholic beverage establishment to allow consumption of beer and wine only, case number 25-CCD-107, on the existing outdoor patio area of Hotel Hermosa in the C3 zone. Do we, staff, do we have a staff report?
Good evening, Chair, members of the Commission. Johnny Case, the project planner, will provide the presentation for you this evening, and just give us a moment, we'll pull up the.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. As mentioned, my name is Johnny Case, and I will be delivering the following presentation on 2515 Pacific Coast Highway. The applicant, Jennifer Oden, on behalf of Pacifica Food and Beverage Incorporated, is requesting the Planning Commission approve a conditional use permit amendment to allow for onsite consumption of beer and wine on the existing outdoor patio for hotel guests only, and determine if the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. As shown on the Hermosa Beach zoning map, the subject property is located within the C3 general commercial zone. The hotel is located at a major commercial intersection, Pacific Coast Highway and Artesia Boulevard, with C3 zone properties located to the north, east, and west of the project site. To the south of the property is a multifamily residential, or is multifamily residential and commercially zoned. Additionally, the project is not located within the coastal zone. The project site, Hotel Hermosa, is an existing 37,620-square-foot hotel with a 4,838-square-foot outdoor patio. The existing conditional use permit, Planning Commission Resolution 20-1, allows onsite sale, service, and consumption of beer and wine indoors only, Sunday through Thursday, 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and Friday and Saturday, 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM. To enhance and expand the amenities provided to hotel guests, the applicant is requesting to expand the on-sale consumption of alcoholic beverages, beer and wine only, for hotel guests, to the existing outdoor patio. The applicant has proposed limited hours of operation for the outdoor patio. Consumption of alcoholic beverages would only be permitted Sunday through Thursday, 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and Friday to Saturday, 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM. The sale of alcoholic beverages would not occur on the outdoor patio as the point of sale shall remain in the interior of the hotel. Alcoholic beverages would not be served by waitstaff to the, on the outdoor patio. The proposed conditional use permit amendment does not propose modifications to the existing floor plan. City staff evaluated the proposal in accordance with the required findings contained in Section 17.56.050 of the Hermosa Beach Municipal Code for Conditional Use Permits. These required findings are informed by the general criteria set forth in 17.56.040 of the Hermosa Beach Municipal Code. Using the general criteria, staff determined that the proposed CUP amendment is consistent with these required findings. As part of the standard review process, this application was reviewed by various city departments, including the Police Department. The Police Department does not object to the proposed CUP amendment, subject to conditions of approval. Staff have provided Planning Commission with a series of proposed conditions of approval for the CUP amendment. Among them include allowed consumption of alcoholic beverages on the outdoor patio, Sunday through Thursday, 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and Friday and Saturday, 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM, as well as the point of sale remaining, the point of sale and service of alcoholic beverages remaining in the interior of the hotel, and that hotel guests shall not be served alcohol by waitstaff on the outdoor patio. Furthermore, the project has been evaluated for consistency with the city's general plan, and the CUP amendment was found consistent with Goal One, Policy 1.5, and Policy 1.7. Lastly, the project was evaluated for consistency with the California Environmental Quality Act and is considered to be exempt as a Class 1 categorical exemption pursuant to Section 15301 for existing facilities. For public noticing for the project, a total of 279 public hearing notices were mailed to the applicant and occupants and property owners of the properties within a 500-foot radius on August 7th, 2025. A legal ad was published on August 9th, 2025, in the Easy Reader, and a public notice poster was posted onsite a minimum of 10 days in advance of the public hearing in accordance with Hermosa Beach Municipal Code, Section 17.68.050. Staff recommends the Planning Commission to adopt the draft resolution determining the project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and approve the conditional use permit amendment to allow onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages, beer and wine only, on the existing outdoor patio at 2515 Pacific Coast Highway, subject to conditions of approval. This concludes staff's presentation. Staff is available to answer any questions, and the applicant is also present in the chambers to provide additional clarification as needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of my fellow commissioners have questions for staff at this time? Commissioner Flaherty?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I got a question on this resolution as we see it today. Is it a combination of all the previous resolutions going back to 216, and does it supersede all the rest of the language that were in those other documents?
The resolution is drafted to be in addition to the existing approvals, so there are some approvals concerning alcohol service that have been amended as part of this CUP that's before you today. But other than those particular conditions of approval associated with the prior resolutions, the other resolutions and approvals would still be intact, so the business would be required to abide by those continuing resolutions as well.
So I don't have to go back to these documents, I just deal with this document?
Yes, well, they are working together, so there are, I believe, some conditions of approval, and perhaps staff can clarify, that are not explicitly included in today's resolution because they have already been adopted, and they will continue to maintain their force and effect after today.
So I guess I want to get down to the one specific point. In Resolution 20-02, Parking Plan Amendment 19-8, in Section 9, it refers to two particular items that were the mainstay of the 2000 resolution made by some of the members of the Commission today. In particular, it says, number nine, exterior signage, et cetera, et cetera, but the one in particular, food and beverage service, including internal sale service and consumption of beer and wine, shall be available only for verified and registered hotel guests and shall not be open to the public. That statement does not appear in this new document. Obviously, it was a key point in 2020. One of the two key points.
Yes.
Is that carried forward?
Correct. So if the resolution today does not explicitly rescind that provision, which it does not, that provision is still in effect today if the Commission chooses to adopt the CUP.
Would it be necessary or unnecessary to just add a new item in this new document?
It would be unnecessary, in my opinion, but obviously, if it's an ongoing concern and something that the Commission thinks is incredibly important to reiterate to the applicant, we can do so today as well.
Including, looking at it in one light, verified for registered hotel guests, seems today maybe a little bit too strict, hotel guests and their guests. Obviously, that's even in the next document we look at on CEASPRIDE. So I'm not saying we shouldn't bring it forward, but if we're going to make any adjustment to that language, it should come forward.
Yes, that's correct, Commissioner.
Thank you. I guess basically, I just want to be able to read a single document that has the rules and regs, so you don't have to filter through three additional documents that go back on this property. So those are my queries right now of staff. Thank you.
Since Mr. Flaherty brought up this question related specifically to guests, one of the emails that we received, and I have a question about that, but a second, mentioned that they had had an event there that had, I believe, it was 25 teenage boys. Can you give me a definition of guests? And when we talk about service being restricted to guests only, were 25 young men that attended some kind of a function there, were they guests of the hotel?
I don't think I'm prepared to answer the specifics on that. I mean.
Well, but can we define a guest? What constitutes a guest? I'm assuming they weren't checked in. I get that. You're a guest if you're staying there, you're checked in. If someone has a, I don't know what, a reception there, a business meeting there, and 20 people come to that meeting, and they're on the grounds, are they now guests of the hotel? Or is that what we mean by definition of a guest?
Since I have the resolution in front of me, I think I can answer the question. So in the resolution that Commissioner Flaherty was referring to, the term is specifically verified and registered hotel guests. So.
That's what had come up repeatedly this evening.
Yes. So my interpretation of verified and registered would mean that someone who has a reservation at the hotel, whether or not they have checked in, might be, you know, a bit of a wobbly question, but it would have to be someone who has an existing reservation at the hotel and can be verified by hotel staff to be, you know, appropriately a member or a guest on the premises.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
That opens up a bigger question that we'll be talking about. I work in the hospitality industry, and I found a way that I could just go to hotels with my daughter and pay $20 and become a registered guest, and jump in the pool and have a good time. And I was a registered guest because I was covered by the insurance and everything, and I was, I was there. There's now an app called Resort Pass, which you can do the same thing. So you don't need a pool, you could just go to Resort Pass and be a member for the day and use the amenities of that facility. So that's, that's a concern.
Do we have any other questions for staff at this time?
No.
None? Okay. Do any of my fellow commissioners have disclosures to make? This can include site visits, conversations, or other evidence received before the meeting that's not in the staff report.
Site visit.
I have a site visit, ask permission to walk through the property, walk through the interior and exterior.
I've had family members stay there. I've been there on several occasions.
Site visit.
Ditto. I've been a guest and site visit. Okay, we'll now begin the public comment portion of the hearing. All questions and comments on this matter are to be directed to the Commission, not to the audience. Is the applicant present? And if so, please approach the podium and make your presentation.
Good eve, good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chairperson, Commissioners, staff. My name is Jennifer Oden. I represent the applicant, Pacifica Hotels. Some of you are familiar faces, so it's good to see you again. First, I want to thank staff for the professionalism, responsiveness, in working together on this application and this project. I also have with me this evening Adam Markey, the President of Pacifica Hotels, Courtney Ryan, the Director of Sales at Hotel Hermosa, and also Denise Wagner, a two-time General Manager at Hotel Hermosa, now the General Manager at the Bellamar Hotel in Manhattan Beach. So as the Commission knows, this is a modification request. Several years ago, the onsite beer and wine for the interior sale service consumption was approved by some members of this Commission, I believe. But now it is an expansion into the existing exterior patio. And with respect to the question or commentary regarding the guest, the intent, I want to be very clear with the intent. The intent from Pacifica is to service its guests of the hotel, not a resort pass, one day, $20 here type guest, but somebody who's either staying at the day, $20 here type guest, but somebody who's either staying at the hotel or corporate events that are getting booked, right, to utilize space or facilities within the hotel. And I think Commissioner Hoffman, maybe that's to your point with respect to the community event that occurred on the patio. So Pacifica Hotels, as just a little bit of background, owns, operates about 30 hotels in California and Hawaii, up and down the coast. They're responsible alcohol beverage control licensees. They have licenses, either type 41s like this license or other, maybe even distilled spirits at some of their locations. And again, responsible with the ABC, know what they're doing. And here, it really is just that amenity to extend to their guests, to help with the corporate bookings, to help with the community, to help have an amenity in an upscale hotel that Hotel Hermosa's invested over the past almost 10 years now, several million dollars into the renovations of that hotel. And since the original approval about five years ago or so, Hotel Hermosa has worked very closely with the community, with the Chamber of Commerce, with the Police Department, with Ms. Becker's predecessor, in the Community Development Department. And everything we heard back was, what a great business example, specifically in meetings with now chief, I want to say captain, but now chief Phillips. So that's what Pacifica comes with, is its proven track record. It does not have any ABC violations with its ABC license at the location today. It does not have code enforcement issues. It does not have law enforcement concerns or issues. As Mr. Case mentioned, the Police Department is not opposed with the conditions of approval. And Pacifica is agreeable to all of those conditions of approval. And as you've probably seen, they're lengthy. You know, always having a manager onsite, the hours for the exterior are very reasonable. It's 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. for beer and wine only on the outdoor patio, Sunday through Thursday, and 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Friday and Saturday, the point of sale located inside. This is not a bar happening on the exterior patio. No bar, no waiter waitress service. Regular monitoring of the patio, appropriate signage. Managers and employees are all trained. No live entertainment, no amplified music, no dancing. This is not a nightclub. This is not something that turns into a late-night alcohol outlet. Video surveillance system, comply with the city's noise ordinance, periodic review process before this commission. So the reason that Pacifica wants to, again, I just wanted to really hit this home, to have this request is to better serve guests that come into the city of Hermosa Beach with an amenity like on-sale beer and wine, sitting out on a patio during reasonable hours. And I do just want to hit that this is a hotel. So the hotel has a very vested interest in the quiet enjoyment of its guests. So it does not want to be a late-night operator. It doesn't want to have, like I said, live entertainment, noise, disturbances, anything of that. That's bad for business. And the ability to offer just this amenity that's become expected, right, in our society, especially with types of hotels similar to Pacifica, is to be able to offer that to incoming corporate guests and, of course, mostly corporate, truthfully, and incoming guests and guests of friends and family. All of it! No, you know what? My husband says I don't need a microphone, so... But so with that, we respectfully request the commission's support, and we're available for any questions. And I think the team would like to individually say some things as well. And I hope the commission has had an opportunity to review. There were several e-commerce that were submitted in support, two of which came from members of the chamber, which I thought were just so eloquently written and articulated for a lot of the reasons that this is appropriate from a planning and land use perspective, certainly in this intensive commercial district of where it's located, but also just from an amenity perspective and with all of the conditions that are incorporated as a part of staff's draft resolution to have the commission's approval. And we're available for any questions.
Thank you. Did you, did other people from your group want to speak now, or?
Sure. Thank you.
We had a comment come in that it was hard to hear from the microphone, so I apologize for... But perhaps would you try the other one and see if it's a little bit better? That one might be...
Testing? Testing? Looks like, yeah, that's the one. I'm short, so this will work for me. Okay. Thank you. Good to see everyone. I'm Courtney Ryan. I have been employed at Hotel Hermosa since 2018, and I've worked for Pacifica Hotel Company for 18 years. Thank you for the opportunity to extend this additional amenity to our hotel guests. In my current position, I'm the Director of Sales at the hotel. My main goals are to bring more business travelers, groups, and meetings to Hermosa Beach and Hotel Hermosa. I have increased our business traveler segment from zero, roughly 0% to about 5% in the last two years. And also, groups that I've hosted this year are sports teams and families associated with Miracosta High School and our AAU beach volleyball tournaments. The Special Olympics of Southern California executives visit our hotel quarterly for groups and meetings and like to use our outdoor space for luncheons currently. Our local businesses, Bionic Breathwork, has hosted their teacher training. We have a repeat guest every year, Women's Church Group, medical supply companies, recruiting companies, Texas Christian University executives, and we are the host hotel for our local Miss California Volunteer Pageant. As we mentioned, I'm active with the Chamber of Commerce and the police. They actually hosted their What the Fuzz and Coffee with a Cop at this outdoor space that we're discussing this evening. And we've increased our business with Skechers as well, so we have a great location to their offices. But year-to-date, they have increased their business travelers to our hotel significantly. So we're bringing some of our Skechers business into Hermosa Beach, not just Manhattan. And 50% roughly of our guest rooms do face that outdoor space. So we want the space to be enjoyed by our guests without disturbing our guests and our neighbors alike. Our business travelers, athlete parents, and leisure guests would love to overlook our beautiful community of Hermosa Beach while enjoying the beverage of their choice. Additionally, we have hosted our neighboring friends and families over the holidays when they have come into town to visit. And I did notice that we had some mentions of noise in our, in some of those letters, but I'd venture to say that we've had zero official noise complaints and that the noise that is at the hotel is less than those that live next to a school or a local park. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the applicant that wishes to say anything at this time?
Hi, good evening. My name is Denise Wagner. I have been a General Manager of Hotel Hermosa. I know some of your faces are familiar. I am now currently over at the Bellamar Hotel. But I was the takeover GM for Hotel Hermosa back in 2015, when Pacifica came in, gave it a renovation, if you remember what Hotel Hermosa was prior to that. They have done something amazing to make it a hotel that the community can be proud of. In Manhattan Beach at the Bellamar, I am surrounded by residents. I've been at that hotel three times over the course of the 13 years that I've been with Pacifica. And we are neighbor-friendly. It is what Pacifica has instilled in us. I go through similar things in CUPs in Manhattan Beach. And we're able to have, operate, hold events, which is different than what they want to hold, but we do this with our residents in mind. We completely adhere to the strict ordinances that were given, and this is something that we're supported by, by Pacifica. It's something that they have trained us on. It's something that Hermosa also has been trained on. And for these reasons, I'm confident that Hotel Hermosa will continue to uphold its strong community partnership while responsibly managing beer and wine service out on the outdoor patio. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair, Chair, Chair Commissioners, and thank you, staff, for allowing us to submit this application this evening. Just a brief history, nine years ago, we acquired this hotel, Hotel Hermosa. I'm Adam Markey. I'm with the ownership and owner of Pacifica Hotels. We're a family business that's been around over 55 years. The operating company's been with us over 35 years, born and raised in Southern California. Nine years ago, we acquired the hotel. As you heard, we extensively renovated the hotel. I think we were eager to pursue the deck for use, and we quickly found out that that was not a great idea with our neighbors. And so we heard that loud and clear. We understood that, you know, in this mixed-use development community that we're in, right on PCH, that there's sometimes neighbors right next door to commercial businesses. And so out of respect for that, we quickly built a $350,000 sound wall from the foundation to both benefit both our guests and our neighbors for privacy. And we wanted to demonstrate and show an example that we could be good neighbors. And I feel like we've done that. Very little to note, no complaints with the Police Department. You know, we're trying to provide an excellent experience, not only for our staff, but for the patrons of this hotel. And as one of the few unbranded hotels in the South Bay area, we own four hotels in Redondo, Manhattan Beach, and a couple in Marina Del Rey. We're next to neighbors at each one of those hotels, and we've never had complaints. I want everyone to know that this is not an open bar. It's not a, it's not something that we're trying to build revenue off of, but we have seen limitations in attracting the corporate guests, which is really important in this corridor with Silicon Beach and all the businesses that are coming into Playa Vista, the surrounding areas. And not having this amenity, you can imagine a corporate guest, you know, working at Skechers or EA Sports coming and saying, "I can't go out and enjoy a sunset on the deck quietly with a glass of wine." So truly, this is something that we just want to amenitize for our guests, because we have received negative comments. So we definitely feel that we've proven to be good neighbors, and we've received the support of, you know, the development community, the Police Department, Chamber of Commerce, and just really hope that we can, that you all will consider our application tonight and approve of, for the CUP. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we've heard from the applicant team. Okay, great. So is there anyone in the chambers that wishes to speak on this item? Reminder that you have up to three minutes. And for public comment on this section, we will accept Zoom calls after we get through
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Linda Cunningham. I'm a resident in Manhattan Beach. I frequent my, the hotel here in Hotel Hermosa, as well as the Bellamar, and my extended family that often comes to visit and to see the kids play sports. And I am very familiar with their team, and very friendly staff that they have at both locations. I just want to speak on their behalf of being a responsible hotel and that I do think that it would be a benefit when somebody comes and visits, especially after a long international flight. I'm speaking about my family from Ireland, that they have a nice glass of wine or beer when they get here to unwind from their flights. I just want to, again, reiterate that they've been a responsible owner and a very pleasant hotel to stay in.
Thank you.
Chairman, I made a air. My name is Tom Coyle. I intended to speak to Item 7B.
Hi there. My name is David Sherwood, and I represent the Seavillas Homeowners Association. I'm the president. We are the property that neighbors them directly to the west. So I represent 33 homeowners, 102 individuals, and 10 children, including my three-year-old daughter and my 13-year-old son. So while the hotel claims a lot of things about, you know, not having any noise issues, all of our residents, you know, strongly object to making any changes. There's a reason why the council and the commission made the decisions they did about not allowing it on the outdoor patio, and that was because it directly affects us. So we can see and hear everything going on in that patio on a regular basis. And so while it might be well-staffed during the day, at night, it's not. And we are the ones who hear the loud noises. We're the ones who are smelling the marijuana smoke. And certainly, if you open this up to beer and alcohol on that patio, alls are going to do is bring in louder guests. Ms. Oden talked about how they're trying to, you know, bring corporate clients. That's great, but she also mentioned that currently they're at 5% corporate clients, which means that the 95% that they are bringing into that hotel are mostly low-cost travelers from Europe who are very hard to control to begin with. And if you start allowing them to have beer and alcohol on the patio, the noise is just going to get out of hand. There are lots of issues, but we don't, we certainly don't call the Police Department every time something comes up. We try to deal with it, you know, as, you know, one neighboring group to the other. But what surprises me most about this is that we deal with the hotel on a regular basis on maintenance issues. You know, we share walls, shrubbery, other things that go on. But this came up, and no one seemed to think to ask what our opinion was on it, you know, 100 people that are there. Council, the city didn't ask. And so I can just tell you, on behalf of all of our residents, we don't think this is a good idea, and we strongly oppose it. And one of the bigger issues with the hotel is that it is perpetually understaffed. So if anyone, if you did a site visit and you walked into the hotel, if you saw somebody, one human being, then you broke a record, because I'm in there all the time, and there is not people around. And certainly, at night, there's not people around. And what we hear is, you know, huge throngs of children in the pool, making lots of noises till late at night. And then the patio, they have games and other things on it that are, you know, make noise. We understand that we are living with a hotel against our wall, but to add the alcohol and the, you know, that was expressly prohibited, you know, a few years back, why are we changing that precedent? There was a reason why the commission made that decision now, and to change that, corporate clients don't say, "Oh, well, gee, if I can't drink alcohol on the patio, I'm not going to come." That's just silly. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a connection, and I also made a mistake between this one, I was, she was on Sea Sprite.
I'm a tax doctor, and I did this.
All right. Is there anyone else in chambers that would like to speak on behalf of this item? Just state your name.
Eric Lastition. I'm a resident in Hermosa since 2012. And, I mean, I knew the old Sea Sprite, and I'll be honest, I don't...
This is, this is Hotel Hermosa. Anyone else in chambers that want to speak on behalf of the Hotel Hermosa project? Okay, let's move on to see if we have anyone that wants to speak online.
There is one online participant who wishes to speak. Laura, you can speak now.
Hi, yes. Good evening, Commissioners. Laura Penya, resident. I want to express my strong support for our Hotel Hermosa CUP. This hotel is a gateway property for our city, often the first impression that visitors have. And it is in our broader community's interest to give Hermosa Beach, or Hotel Hermosa, the operational flexibility it needs to succeed. It is an industry standard to provide accommodations, a unique boutique experience with alcohol service, and I would hate to see that this particular hotel is not being provided what many hotels provide, is an industry standard. So hospitality in our city is probably one of the most important economic drivers, and hotels don't just house guests. They actually fuel our local restaurants, our shops, our services. And every visitor who will stay at Hotel Hermosa is a potential repeat customer for our businesses across our town. So by allowing guests to just enjoy a glass of wine or beer on their patio is not only reasonable, but this is what most people who travel expect. Now, one of the things that I'm concerned about... Now, one of the things that I'm concerned about is that if we try to take away some of their ability to provide top-notch service, we are not giving them a proper level playing ground. And so, I would just hope that you would consider their recommendations and provide this amenity. Many people enjoy it, and I just hope that we can be supportive and create a win-win relationship with us. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else online?
There are no further participants wishing to speak.
Okay. Does the applicant wish to make any further statement in response to, before we close the public comment portion of the hearing?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just briefly, Jennifer Oden, again, I just wanted to touch upon maybe some of the comments from Mr. Sherwood. He mentioned that all of the Sea View Villa residents are opposed. I think, as the commission has been able to see, that's not entirely accurate. There was actually even a comment, I believe, submitted from a resident within Sea View Villas, David Mikowski, that I saw come in as a supplemental comment sometime over the weekend or even today. So I don't think that that's entirely accurate. And to say that he could see the outdoor patio, as we know, that's not accurate either. As Mr. Markey mentioned, the hotel, on its own volition several years ago, enacted a $350,000, roughly, privacy wall that's aesthetically pleasing to both sides of the property in order to provide privacy to the residents, because one of the concerns back then was windows are right there, and we don't want to have people from an exterior patio see into a window. That was not a condition that this commission or city council or anybody else put on the hotel. The hotel did that. There was only a condition with respect to headlights coming in down the driveway for parking spaces 1, 2, and 3, to have some sort of block there, which the hotel also did. But the entire length of that exterior patio is screened, if you will, for privacy. And if you've been there and had the site visit, you can certainly see that as well. So, and I think to say that all of these noise problems or issues, as Mr. Sherwood said, it's just not demonstrated, right? If that were, in fact, true, then we would have law enforcement concerns. We would be hearing from our law enforcement here in Hermosa Beach, which is extremely active, as we know, when it comes to complaints here in the city. And we're not. They are supportive, are not opposed with respect to this CUP expansion modification with the conditions of approval, all of which the applicant is agreeable to, plus all of the conditions that already do exist under the parking plan and interior CUP. And we'd have code enforcement problems, and we don't. And the hotel keeps logs of complaints and checks in, and they're not having these problems or these issues. So I think, unfortunately, it's what we heard maybe five, six years ago, roughly, a parade of terribles happening. And luckily, as Adam said, as Mr. Markey said, the hotel wanted to come and improve its worth and its value, and that it can be a good community member and owner-operator, and it has done that, evidenced by all of the support. I think there's 15, 20 or so letters of support, e-commerce and support, members that, of course, have come here tonight and support. So, again, we're available for any questions. We really appreciate your time, staff's time, consideration, and respectfully request the approval of this modification.
Thank you. And Ms. Oden, before you sit down, I'll ask if any of my fellow commissioners have questions of the applicant before we close the public comment portion of this hearing.
I do. Could you give me a typical example of who's using the patio? I have been over there a handful of times recently, walked through the patio. And indeed, in 2000, that lumber drop that you had, the Jenga game, caused a huge amount. I mean, it sounded like a truck dropping a load of lumber when that pallet fell. It's gone. I saw that.
Correct.
And also, the pool tables are still there, and there's another cornhole is there. Is there any games that you could substitute rather than the cracking of a cue ball or something like that that would help somehow with the noise factor? Or do you have any other ideas for games for outside?
I mean, generally speaking, the games are ancillary, right? And it's a 4,800-square-foot, you know, exterior patio for the guests to enjoy. Yes, the Jenga has been removed, right? There were concerns with respect to noise from the Jenga blocks falling down. That's been removed. I think, really, to answer your question, the hotel ownership management has been responsive, right? Two questions, comments, concerns, removing Jenga is an example of that. For corporate events where the exterior patio is going to be used for traveling guests, things like that, probably, and Courtney could maybe speak better to this than I, certainly being on-site, would likely just move some of those things around for the event itself for people to have, you know, their taco and a glass of wine or beer. But is there an intent right now to remove any of the games? No, and I think they're very minimal in accessory and ancillary in nature. But I'll let Courtney address in more detail.
Good evening again. So to answer your question about who's using the outdoor space, when I do have meetings inside the hotel, often, our corporate guests will go outside for lunch with, you know, catered food items, things like that. And then, we've just finished up summer, so kids and families love the outdoor space. It gives a little bit of, you know, with that large of a square footage, parents waiting to check in or just needing a little bit more fresh air before they head out to the beach. We have those very large loungers. So often, you'll catch people reading a book or scrolling on their phone, soaking up the sunshine and the view of Hermosa. But the games are a little bit more popular with the families. You know, I've got pictures of my own family, you know, having some special bonding time out there, grandpas and grandkids and things like that.
So as you run these events, what do you think your high peak is for guests on the patio?
As far as occupancy, or...
Do you have a 323 occupancy rate?
Yeah, I, you know, that's something to consider. We haven't had an event like that.
You have ceremonies or weddings or...
Yeah. You know, we would definitely keep that in mind, but the safety and the noise would be first and foremost.
Currently, you haven't had any wedding ceremonies?
No.
Or celebrations of life ceremonies or anything like that?
No. At this point, it's been only used casually for luncheons and relaxations. The only event that I've formally had out there was the Hermosa Hermanos, which is the philanthropy group of high school students. So it was the sons and the mothers that had their end-of-year luncheon. But it was two hours on a Sunday afternoon.
A rusher's group?
Sorry?
Never mind.
Well, and just to briefly also answer your question, Commissioner Flaherty, it would be within those hours, right? The limited hours that are being requested here, the 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM and 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM. So, and certainly, one of the conditions in the conditional use permit approval already exists today and would exist going forward is compliance with the noise ordinance.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right.
I have a question.
One more question.
So Pacifica Hotels is a recognized family business. I think a few years ago, recognized in the Orange County Business Journal as one of the best companies in the state. So, cool. My question to you is that I remember when you got the license about five years ago or so. And in my research, I went back thinking you had a 41 wine beer with food service. But I believe you have like a counter, not a kitchen. So I would have thought you had a 66, which is a concealed beverage license, which most hotels have for having alcohol in the rooms. When I go on the California Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control, there is no license for 2515 Pacifico Highway.
Oh, I could, I, there, I assure you, there is.
Okay. So is it held in a different entity, or is it held in a corporation?
It's held...
Adam, can you help me with that?
Yeah, it's held under Pacifica Food and Beverage Company. It is a type 41, on-sale beer and wine. ABC did come out, do its inspection. Keep in mind, sometimes we have, in a 66, I'm very familiar, I practice in this area, alcohol beverage control licensing. A type 66 is the controlled access cabinet permits in the rooms, right? Your minibars, your minibars in the rooms. That's an ancillary license to a license on a property, like a type 41, like a type 47, which includes distilled spirits. Here, there is no minibars in the rooms.
Okay, so no 66, just a 41. And obviously, ABC has accepted the circumstances. Even, okay, that's all I ask. Thank you for the clarification.
Yes, it absolutely passed its kitchen inspection, all of those things. It's an active, I think I was there for the walkthrough even right before COVID hit or when COVID was happening with the licensing rep, but yes.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. Alexis, do you have something?
Yeah, Chair, we do have one additional caller that raised their hand after we moved away from that. So I just wanted to bring your attention if you want to take that or...
Sure.
Anthony, you may speak.
Yeah, hello. I just wanted to make a brief comment. The gentleman who spoke from the Homeowners Association, he said that, you know, he represents 150 residents. Even if only 75 of those residents actually are experiencing degradation in their quality of life from the noise on the patio. That's significant. I guess it's just common sense that if you have, you know, up to 325 people on the patio, it's going to be more noisy, significantly more noisy if alcohol is being consumed on the patio. And what I'm really concerned about is that this somehow ends up being a precedent where other businesses are located right next to residents. We get more and more alcohol being served right next to the residents. And it is a degradation of quality of life. Maybe it's for a good purpose, maybe it isn't. Maybe it's needed, you know, for city's offers, maybe it isn't. That's above my grade. But there is an impact, and I hope it doesn't set a precedent. And thank you for giving me a chance to comment. Goodbye.
All right, thank you. I'm now going to close the public comment portion of this hearing and bring the matter back to the commission for discussion and deliberation. Does anyone want to kick us off? Commissioner McNally?
Not yet, please.
I'll go this way. Commissioner Izant?
Chair Hirsch, in situations like this, in a city our size, are always problematic when we look at residential along the entire PCH corridor and businesses. The next topic that we have coming up is going to be a similar situation magnified. So for me, it comes down to what seems to be reasonable, if there's a balance. I was impressed with the wall that had been erected. I realize that that's probably not perfect in terms of keeping out 100% of the sound for the people to live immediately on the other side. But I guess I'm going to be coming down on this as I think it's a reasonable request.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Flaherty?
Yes. I brought up earlier about the Parking Plan Amendment 1918, 19-8, 20-02 resolution. I do think we should bring it forward, and I certainly take the advice of the attorney. If we're not going to change it, it doesn't need to come forward. But I'm asking for a change. I think we should at least address that maybe the registered hotel guest need also, and their guest type of opening, because you couldn't have the hotel guests be the one out on the patio and his guest who is visiting him inside. So, or vice versa. But all I'm asking for is, I think it should be expanded to, as Commissioner Hoffman indicated, there was a letter in support of going out on the patio that indicated she had a, as well as the hotel management team indicated, they had that group out there. They were not registered hotel guests. They were guests of the hotel. So I think it's reasonable to have, if you get a hotel room there, to have someone over for dinner and dinner, or drinks, or whatever it happens to be. So I think that needs to be expanded. And if you expand it, I think it needs to come forward into the new document. That being said, I don't know how to expand it or how to add the right language. We've had different interpretations over the years and who's a guest and who's not a guest, and all the above. And as it was said earlier, we don't need, we may not need a $20-a-day coupon to allow us on the property. That being said, those are the only other comments I've had I will have on this currently. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hoffman?
Well, this is a little of that deja vu for me. As has been noted, I was on the commission when we passed the current CUP, and it was kind of across the New Year, 2019, 2020. And two things that are constantly brought up when we're doing these kinds of things, that I'm afraid not everybody who often is, this is the first time we've been here, because this issue came up, you know, immediately next door. This isn't, and I know this doesn't sound commonsensical, this is not a decision about the operator and the business. The Planning Commission makes decisions about land use. It's, I don't think anyone can argue, this is a very unusual site. And not only is it an unusual site at the adjacent position to the main arterials in town, the entrances was noted to the town, but it's also a relatively large parcel immediately adjacent to a relatively large parcel that has been developed, excuse me, residential immediately adjacent to a commercial property. And in retrospect, you know, I'd probably argue it was developed incorrectly in the sense that we put the parking and we put the impactful side of the project next to the neighbors and put the residential component or the guest component of the hotel adjacent to the street. I understand we can double-pane windows and do things to reduce traffic noise, and maybe that was part of the design. But we end up with a situation that is what it is. We have a relatively, for Hermosa, relatively large hotel immediately adjacent to a relatively large residential property that is, what, six feet off of the property line. Undoubtedly, constructing that sound wall was beneficial. On the other hand, I'm sure the people that are immediately adjacent lost a lot of light and so forth as a result of that. But the question comes back to me is, what would be a reasonable set of conditions for that particular property in this particular use? This is why there's a CUP. We know there are impacts associated with particular kinds of businesses. Our job is to try and minimize those impacts as best, most effectively we can through the CUP process. We did that in 2000, to my satisfaction, or 2020, to my satisfaction. What I'm hearing is that there have been no complaints, that the operators have operated effectively. There has been some noise, but certainly not what would be apparently excessive noise. I'm not seeing the captain up here, the chief up here, going down a list of complaints and so forth. But I'm also not sure what it is that's changed today from five years ago. And I know what the operators and many of you are probably thinking, well, what's different is how they've operated for five years. What I can't take any confidence in, and this is not a reflection on this operator or this hotel, too many times, I've sat here, gone through a process like this, gave essential entitlements, and a month later, the property was up for sale, or the property was up for a different operator. I'm not suggesting that's the situation here, but it's the reality I have to consider as I make the determination. I'm unpersuaded... I'm unpersuaded at this point that what we did in 2020 was bad, in other words, was ineffective in mitigating the impacts, and I'm not persuaded that this is such a... Remember, the establishment does have beer and wine indoors. The only request here is to move that consumption, not even the service, but the consumption out onto the patio. I said something to my wife, why would anyone need, you know, beer and wine at 8:00 in the morning? And she quickly pointed out, well, you and I have both done that, but okay, I won't get into that. But the reality is, and again, why do we have CUPs for alcohol-serving establishments? Because people, when they are drinking, tend to get loud and have fun and relax and enjoy themselves, and the inevitable consequences of that in this particular site, as it is developed, is potentially problematic from my perspective. So I need my fellow commissioners, quite frankly, to persuade me otherwise, but otherwise, I'm going to sort of, if you will, stand by the previous determination from five years ago.
Commissioner McNally?
Okay, I guess I'm ready now. Because I have some experience in this industry, I see all the problems that can come up, where you get a little crack in the dam and you get an okay and everything goes your way. My challenge is that there are some limitations on times and enforcement, and I'm not convinced yet that we have a plan in place of enforcement. One of the other speakers said that the staff, you know, is, you know, at a minimum, which we all know is hard in this business climate and community. I feel as though I would be more likely to feel comfortable with this if there was a policy to enforce the arrangements that have been given. I don't want to hold a business back from their ability to be successful or regulate that. I want to be able to know that the issues in place are being enforced. So I believe that that's the one key I need, is an understanding better of how these time limits, noise, occupancy are going to be enforced.
All right, so I appreciate the perspectives of my fellow commissioners. I have been a guest at the Hotel Hermosa, and I am a neighbor to Hotel Hermosa, kind of further down the street. I don't think that the request is unreasonable. I have visited the site since we have gotten this noticed and recognized the sound wall. I also recognize that they have half of their units facing this patio, so they're, you know, even though my fellow commissioners noted, you know, maybe this was designed backwards, maybe it was, but, you know, I think that the concern that the hotel would have in terms of managing to the other hotel guests' expectations are in alignment with the adjacent uses. You know, I think that if we are concerned about impacts or noise, we can talk about the hours, we could talk about the occupancy, there are things that we can discuss if we need to, but I think that the request to have consumption of alcohol on the patio is a reasonable request. Any other comments or debate or motion?
So Chair Hirsch, just to clarify, no, not clarifying, just to reemphasize, Commissioner Flaherty, you want the language from the prior resolution, even though it's technically not necessary, you would, just as a restatement, you would like to see that language moved forward into the current resolution. Is that correct?
I do, but the main point would be to redefine it as a, shall be available only for verified and registered hotel guests, but obviously, there has to be another statement, a sentence or so, that allows their guests to enjoy that time at the hotel too, including having a meal or drinking a glass of wine. And so far, this one is pretty restrictive. It says, first of all, we were only dealing, back in 2000, we were only dealing with having alcohol service on the interior of the hotel. And at that time, we said only hotel guests could be availed for alcohol drinks. I think that's too restrictive as I look at it today, because I think we should have... Now, that's not answering the question whether she'll go out on the patio, but I think if we address this CUP, I'd like to redefine that, unless, of course, the city attorney feels or staff feels that that statement by itself would allow the hotel to have guests of guests.
Well, the terminology we're speaking about, right, is verified or registered hotel guests and shall not be open to the public. So I think there is some room for interpretation there regarding, again, what is a verified and registered hotel guest. If a person is attending a registered event at the hotel, they might not be staying at the hotel, but perhaps they're there for the day, they could be considered a verified guest. If someone is a guest of someone who is staying at the hotel, perhaps that is a verified guest. I do believe there is some room for interpretation here, but I have been over here jotting down some notes about your request, Commissioner Flaherty, so I'm happy to provide some suggested language. And similar to the resolution we saw, I believe, last month, I think we could provide some language regarding, you know, staff shall work with city attorney to develop a condition of approval that addresses X, Y, and Z to your comment, to your point.
I'm happy with that, whatever that language may be. Certainly, you can write it better than I can.
And if you would like to make that motion, I can come in at the end and write something to that effect, so we can move forward.
Thank you.
Any other comment, or does anyone want to offer up a motion?
So, again, do we need an amendment to add the language from the city attorney?
I think we can, we can, if you were inclined, you could provide a motion, and in your motion say, including language as updated by, as suggested by the city attorney.
Sure. Would it be reasonable to ask Pacific Hotels to give us a one-page enforcement policy on how they're going to monitor the time and, you know, if there's a security person on site and/or a general, a manager that would, you know, cut it off? Is this like a thing like in a bar at, you know, 10 to 2, we pull the drinks off everyone's hand?
So, so just to clarify for procedure here, the public comment portion of the meeting is closed, so we can't ask the applicant back to comment, but we could, if you, if this is important, you could present a motion that includes an additional condition that we could add into the resolution to address your concern.
Okay. I would ask that, I feel as though I'm more likely to be in favor of this motion if I understood a enforcement policy.
Chair Hirsch, so that we don't, so that's probably not going to appear this evening, but we could incorporate it in that an enforcement policy, subject to review and approval by staff, would then become part of this particular amendment?
Yes, we could do that. I think we would probably want to be specific about what we want in that enforcement policy that is, you know, agreed by the Commission. So I did hear Commissioner McNally, your concerns were about monitoring hours of consumption and noise?
Because we approve this outdoor, this allows a much larger marketing opportunity, and that could expand, because guests of guests, we need to have some idea what that would be, and that would, that would affect, and I think it helped the business, but it would also affect the noise and the quality for the neighbors around it.
Chair, I'm suggesting, looking at, listening to Commissioner's recommendation, or Section 3, 6, Item 6, staff shall regularly monitor to ensure compliance, that's probably the appropriate place to add something to a standing policy or a policy that's made, you know, present or whatever, the same way that we talk about the CUP has to be present and visible, that the rules are somehow, I think that's what we're trying to get out there.
So, condition sticks currently reads, staff shall regularly monitor the outdoor patio to ensure compliance with conditions and ensure it is closed to patrons outside the, of allowed hours. Commissioner McNally, are you suggesting that we incorporate language around an operations plan that's approved by city staff that outlines how staff will regularly monitor hours, noise, and in compliance with the conditions?
I think that's appropriate for this position.
All right. We are still looking for a motion.
Chair Hirsch, I move Staff's Recommendation 25-13, which consists of a conditional use permit, as well as that the project is categorically exempt from SEQA with two amendments, or not amendments, but insertion of language that's been discussed. The first is Commissioner Flaherty's wanting to bring forward and being very specific on who is allowed and who is not allowed. And then, secondly, to Commissioner McNally's point, that an enforcement policy on how it's actually going to be carried out be required under Section 6, and that's subject to review by and approved by staff.
All right, it's been motioned and seconded. Can we please open for a vote? Does staff need any clarification on the suggested language?
I believe I have the notes that I need. If anyone else needs any clarification? All right.
Okay.
And voting is open. Motion carries for one vote.
We will move on to the next agenda item for our public hearing. And I just closed the window, so give me a second. Okay, this is item number 7B, request for conditional use permit 23-02, located at 1016 The Strand to allow outdoor dining, outdoor amplified live entertainment, and on-sale consumption of alcoholic beverages, beer, wine, and distilled spirits on an existing outdoor patio, case number 25-CDD-113 of an existing hotel and restaurant, otherwise known as the Sea Sprite in the C1 zone. Do we have a staff report?
Thank you, Chair. Associate Planner Jake Whitney has this presentation for you this evening.
All right. Good evening, planning commissioners. As mentioned, my name is Jake Whitney, and I will be delivering the presentation this evening for the proposed conditional use permit. The request before you this evening is stated in the agenda as to allow for outdoor dining, outdoor amplified live entertainment, as well as on-sale alcoholic beverages consisting of beer, wine, and distilled spirits on an existing outdoor patio of an existing hotel and restaurant in the C1 neighborhood commercial zone, as well as to determine the project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Little background on the project, the Sea Sprite Hotel is a 35-room boutique hotel with an accessory restaurant use located at 1016 The Strand in the neighborhood commercial zone. The existing hotel use at the project site is classified as legal non-conforming within the zoning district. The project site is bordered by 10th Street to the south, 11th Court to the north, Beach Drive to the east, and The Strand to the west. It is also located within the coastal zone. Vehicular access to the site comes in from Beach Drive while there's a pedestrian entrance to the site located on 10th Street. The existing restaurant and proposed alcohol service, as well as outdoor dining and proposed live entertainment at the subject site, are considered to be accessory uses to the existing hotel, meaning that they are incidental and subordinate to that existing non-conforming hotel use pursuant to the municipal code definition of accessory. Some further information, the Sea Sprite Hotel recently completed renovations at the property, including a lobby relocation, as well as adding new interior restaurant space. The building permit for, you know, the mentioned work was issued in February of 2024, and they received a business license on January 1, 2025. Additionally, the Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control issued a type 41 license, which covers beer and wine sales to the business on April 25 of 2025, and they had previous ABC licenses of type 66, which is the controlled access cabinet permits, as well as type 70, which is for on-sale general restrictive services. Those licenses were surrendered at the same date that the type 41 license was acquired, which was April 25, 2025. Furthermore, as shown on the zoning map above, the property is located within the neighborhood commercial zone, also within the downtown district, and is surrounded by commercial uses on two out of four sides. The nearest residential property is located approximately 20 feet away, the alley on So the request this evening from Hermosa Hospitality LLC is the conditional use permit for that outdoor dining, the amplified live entertainment, and the onsite consumption of beer, wine, and distilled spirits. With this CUP, the applicant proposes to enhance the onsite dining experience to hotel guests and their guests by making those amenities available to the patrons. The proposed hours of outdoor dining and alcoholic beverage service on the patio are proposed to be from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM daily. Meanwhile, indoor dining would be permitted from 7:00 AM to midnight daily, and the proposed hours of any outdoor amplified live entertainment would be from 12:00 PM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Thursday, and 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Friday through Sunday. If this CUP were to be approved, the applicant would intend to seek a type 47 license from the California Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control to facilitate this request. As we see on the floor plan above, Sea Sprite's clientele would enter the ground floor from 10th Street and would have the option of eating and drinking indoors adjacent to the reception area and bar space, or outdoors on the courtyard and terrace. Additionally, the applicant is proposing the use of guest ambassadors, which are primarily responsible for various security functions related to alcohol service and refusal to serve. They would be assigned to monitor activity indoors, as well as on the courtyard and terrace. The guest ambassadors would be present on site from 4:00 PM until closing time on Monday through Thursday, and from... through Thursday, and from noon to closing Friday through Sunday. Additionally, in the draft resolution before you this evening, the applicant would be required to provide security camera footage, saved for periods of 60 days, and be available to the Hermosa Beach Police Department upon request. So, city staff has evaluated this proposal in accordance with the required findings contained in Municipal Code Section 17.56.50 of the Municipal Code Regarding Conditional Use Permits. The criteria, the review criteria is shown on the screen above for reference purposes. An analysis pertaining to this sets of criteria may be found on pages four through six of your staff reports. The project was further evaluated for consistency with the city's general plan, and the CUP is found to be consistent with Goal 1, Policy 1.5 pertaining to balance of resident and visitor uses, as well as Policy 1.7 pertaining to nuisances between different types of This brings us to our environmental determination. The project was evaluated for consistency with the California Environmental Quality Act and is considered to be exempt under a Class 1 category exemption pursuant to Section 15301 of CEQA guidelines for existing facilities. As of the part of the public noticing for this project, a total of 340 public hearing notices were mailed out to the applicant occupants and property owners within a 500-foot radius of the site on August 7th of 2025. A legal ad was further published on August 9th, 2025, in the Daily Breeze, and a public noticing poster was placed onsite a minimum of 10 days in advance of the hearing. This is all in accordance with our noticing procedures in Hermosa Beach Municipal Code And this brings us to the recommendation, which is staff is considering, staff is recommending the planning commission adopt the draft resolution determining that the project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and approval of the conditional use permit case number 23-2, allowing outdoor dining, amplified live entertainment, and onsite, on sale alcoholic beverages consisting of beer, wine, and distilled spirits on the existing outdoor patio of the hotel and restaurant, subject to the conditions of approval in the draft resolution. And this concludes staff's presentation. We are available to answer any questions that the commission may have. Additionally, the applicant is present in the chambers to provide additional clarification, as well as their own presentation.
Thank you. Do any of my fellow commissioners have questions of staff at this time?
I do.
And I do.
I have several questions, and they're all, I hate to say it for the public, but they're, they're sort of tactical in terms of what codes are applicable in the C1 zone. Recognizing, and this is a complicated project, for those of you who haven't reviewed it, it's a not legally nonconforming use in the C1 zone. It is asking to have a accessory, to an accessory, it's asking to have a CUP for an accessory use in that zone, and it additionally is asking for what is described, although I don't think it's technically referred to, as limited live entertainment, which is, would be an accessory to the accessory use in the zone. So, it gets a little in the weeds in terms of the technical part of it. But when I looked at the, the draft resolution and the codes that were cited as the basis for which we would be giving the CUP, it seems to me that they are related to CUPs for on sale alcohol where it's permitted. And the key, as I interpret our codes, on sale alcohol sales are not permitted in the C1 zone. Further, in the C1, in the, in the C1 zone, but I think it's true anywhere, outdoor entertainment requires a permit, not a CUP, but in the C1 zone, limited live entertainment is not permitted on outdoor patios. It has to be in a completely enclosed premise. It seems to me that since we're treating this as we always have now, if I'm misinterpreting commission policy, but in all of the time that I've served on the commission, when we've dealt with nonconforming properties, we've never permitted, I don't know what the right word is, to exacerbate the nonconformance by granting uses that are inconsistent with the zone. And unless I'm reading our code book incorrectly, we don't allow on sale alcohol sales in the C1 zone. We don't allow limited live, limited live entertainment outdoors, and we don't allow alcohol service outdoors in the C1 zone, in which case it occurs, it strikes me that what we're being asked to do is give a CUP to legalize a use that's not permitted, and we all know, in the state of California, there's no such thing as a use variance. I'm, I'm stymied.
Well, thank you for your question, Commissioner. So, the basis for the proposed accessory uses before you this evening fall under the existing legal nonconforming umbrella use. So, within the municipal code.
If, if, I don't want to interrupt, but make it sure that it's clear to me, even if it is exacerbating the nonconformance.
So, the staff's position is that the existing legal nonconforming hotel use would remain onsite, and because the municipal code defines accessory as not only buildings, but also uses that are incidental and subordinate to the principal use, that the accessory uses are all linked to the existing legal nonconforming use. There is additionally language in the draft resolution, Condition Number 8, which limits service to guests and guests' guests of the hotel property.
I brought that up earlier, obviously.
And that was precisely for that legal consistency, in order to have these uses be incidental and subordinate to the principal main use. So, that is how staff has interpreted the accessory uses, is not being independent uses in and of itself, but part of the greater hotel use.
Even though the accessory in this case really is a new use.
So, in staff's position, the on sale alcohol has been a legal nonconforming right. The planning commission could certainly determine that what is being asked is an intensification. However, in staff's opinion, you had allowance for in-room alcohol previously, you also had allowance for alcohol, beer, and wine as a complimentary service. So, and those are on sale uses, right? So, this is a different type of on sale alcohol. They're, they are foregoing the, they have foregone the in-room and the complimentary service in lieu of this. So, in staff's opinion, those were kind of equivalent exchanges, with that limitation of it still being limited to guests, to registered guests. However, should the commission find differently, then you can.
Can you give me some other examples of nonconforming?
Uses.
Correct.
We virtually never deal with uses, and that's why my confusion. Variances have almost exclusively been related to physical. That's the only place you get a variance in California.
Well, Commissioner Flaherty, can you clarify your question? Like, what sorts of nonconformances are you asking about?
Sands the question regarding the alcohol and the use in a C-zone. Is there building nonconformances? Is there setback nonconformance? Is there structural height nonconformances? Is there anything that is not being cured during this remodel? Or has been some nonconforming issues cured during this remodel? Is the nonconforming specific to the use of alcohol on the property?
There may be physical attributes of the building that are nonconforming. I don't think staff, based on this application, we're not prepared to be able to give you like an itemized, you know, is the floor area in conformance, all of those types of physical attributes.
Parking?
I do not believe the use is conforming with parking.
Okay. Currently, the, I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, I'm still kind of struggling, obviously, with the accessory to an accessory somehow fitting into the, the nonconformance part of this, the legal nonconformance. If Granny's Market decided tomorrow that they would have outdoor music on their patio, we would simply grant that as a accessory use and look the other way? And I apologize if Granny, I think Granny's isn't an R1, but if it's in the legal zone, I apologize. But I'm just trying to think off the top of my head of an example, comparable example. If an auto body shop decided they were gonna start doing the paint-
So, to answer the first question, the, it would depend more on whether the use is incidental and subordinate to the primary use, as opposed to being its own independent use. So, for example, if this were, say, a ticketed entertainment event that stands alone in and of itself, then that would be a new use, and we would have to evaluate it on the basis of that. If it were limited to, say, patrons of the eatery, and there were, if the specifics of the proposal aligned with that definition of being subordinate to, then it would be, we'd classify it as accessory and incidental. So, the, the specifics there would be hyper pertinent to that determination.
And I, if I might, since she's sitting right here, the city attorney has signed this, so you're in agreement with the staff's interpretation?
Yes, and I've heard, heard you say accessory to an accessory use a few times. I, from my interpretation and my understanding of what staff is proposing, I don't believe we have kind of a stacking of accessory uses. This is an accessory use that is subordinate and incidental to the nonconforming use.
Well, excuse me. You're suggesting to me that music, live entertainment in a patio is subordinate incidental accessory use to a hotel or motel?
Yes.
Then, even though it's connected clearly in this case to the restaurant?
But the restaurant itself is also incidental and subordinate to the hotel.
Which again, we just stacked it up again.
But they're not stacked. I would say they are connected. The, the, the restaurant use is also asking to be able to serve alcohol and to provide live music, which are both uses that are connected traditionally to restaurant uses. And the restaurant use is incidental and subordinate to the hotel use. That is how I believe staff is presenting this item, and that's how I also reviewed this item.
Do we have other questions of staff at this time?
Chair Hirsch, I do. Part of granting a CUP is that there must be a specific plan, and we have a plan in front of us, but I don't see where the two live music performers would perform. And I would think that that should be notated on this plan, but it's not anywhere. Do we know where they're going to be performing, and do we need an amended floor plan?
The applicant would be best equipped to answer the specifics on where the live entertainers would be located onsite, if you prefer to direct that question.
I will defer at that time. My next question is, you know, clearly, one of the issues that a number of people are here for are the issue of live entertainment, and how that's going to affect the surrounding neighborhood, which is a valid concern. So, and I may not have it 100% correct, but if you're on Pier Plaza and you have music in sharkies, for example, I think the CUP ordinance is it can't be above 80 decibels heard from a certain number of feet from the front door of the restaurant. This is going to be outside music. Does the city have any kind of ordinance that governs this kind of activity so that if a code enforcement officer is driving down Beach Drive and goes, "Well, that's in violation," or, "Oh, they're okay, it's right on the edge," but can someone enlighten me, please, on, on what ordinances or rules or regulations do we have with regard to outside live music?
So, customarily, it's audible from the property, the perimeter of the property. That's generally the rule of thumb, as it's in the Health and Safety Section of the Municipal Code.
So, the, I, I believe I saw a letter from one constituent that said that the current recorded music that they play at certain hours can be held, can be heard at a distance that it sounds like it's well beyond the, the property limits. So, is what they're doing now, then, in violation of what you just said?
So, I, we do have a number of complaints. We did poll history for the site. There have been complaints. I can't speak to where they were heard from, but yes, if it's audible beyond the property line, then it would be in violation of the municipal code.
So, when you're saying complaints, are we talking about formal calls for service?
Correct.
Do you have a number of how many there are in the last 12 months?
In the last 18 months, approximately 18 months, there were, associated with this address, approximately 15 various noise complaints. A few, a handful were perhaps for loud dog or mechanical equipment, but the others were mostly categorized as loud party music or talking.
One last question, actually. I guess this is one I'm going to ask the applicant, but I hope you pass on my request, and that is, I'm interested in the ratio of food to wine and beer for the month of July, the ratio, percentage ratio.
Yeah, I think that question would be best asked, answered by the applicant in this case. Certainly, as you know, in terms of the review provisions for CUPs, that is certainly something we can request, but it has not been requested at, at this time, so I don't have that off the cuff.
Chair Hirsch, two more questions, then I'm done. In the draft resolution, I don't know if this is boilerplate or if there's something still spending, pending, excuse me, but Number 24, we may review this conditional use permit and may revoke if deemed necessary to mitigate detrimental effects. The conditional use, but the, so that gives us the power, should we pass this, that sometime in the future, if there are very substantial negative effects on the neighborhood, that we then have the ability to bring this back for review?
That's correct.
Okay, the second half, I'm just interested, this is more of detail, it says this shall also be revocable if an encroachment permit for the use of the public right-of-way is not secured in a timely manner to the satisfaction of the Public Works Director. Do we have a easement issue here that we're, cities working on?
So, there is an existing portion of the property that is currently within the public right-of-way, as we currently have it conditioned use of the right-of-way would be prohibited by the applicant, and that is why there is language in the condition saying that use of the right-of-way would be prohibited unless otherwise permitted by the city, and the second half of Condition Number 24 is to state that it shall be revocable if an encroachment permit for the use of the right-of-way is not secured in a timely manner to the satisfaction of the Public Works Director. So, that is to guarantee the comfortability for the city that if there are, if the portion of the right-of-way is being used for commercial purposes, in contrary to what is approved by the CUP, that gives the, the Public Works Director the ability to pull the approval if, if that, if that insurance and that liability coverage isn't ascertained through the encroachment permit process. permit process.
Last question, Chair Hirsch. Section 25, this permit shall expire within 24 months or final decision of the City Council unless significant construction or improvements for the use authorized hereby has commenced. I've seen, of course, as we all have, substantial remodeling of the entire property. Are there still pending things pending that need to be completed? That we need this language?
For physical renovations of the property?
I believe that's what this refers to.
We do not have any pending physical changes to the property. It's, the request before the commission this evening is limited to, you know, use and incidental uses, not towards physical changes at this time.
I agree, except that it's in our resolution.
That is a standard kind of language of the condition, so it can certainly be modified to the specifics of the standard, of this, excuse me, application, in which you're, you're correct, there's no physical improvements proposed as part of the project. So it could be tied just generally to, that they've enacted or began using the conditional use permit within this 24 months and not necessarily to a physical improvement.
Thank you. That's all my questions, Chair Hirsch.
Thank you.
My question regarding staff is, to my understanding, there's no such thing as outdoor entertainment, and it was never part of it until, unless you had an entertainment permit, which was like a day-long thing, such as the concerts at the pier. We lifted those during COVID when you couldn't go into the business. You had to sit outside. And therefore, in order to increase business or support businesses, all of those were lifted and/or just kind of looked the other way. As I ride my bike up Pier Plaza on a Sunday afternoon, there's people out there playing music. Where do we stand at that right now? Is that, are they, is there other music permits? Because I know that when I had a bar, I had to have a permit, and I was, there was, as Commissioner Izant said, there was a noise limitation, and they would come by with a decimal meter, and if we were over it, we would have to slow it down. So before we add another outdoor entertainment venue, where do we stand with, what's the policy on, on outdoor entertainment at this time?
So I think along Pier Plaza, there's kind of two components. The regulations with regards to entertainment in the right-of-way have, have in fact evolved, and so some of those outdoor patios actually sit within the right-of-way, and it does, it does allow, have an allowance for entertainment in that situation. But you're right, in general, the provisions from COVID have otherwise ceased, so allowances for entertainment in other situations no longer continue.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
I could just follow up on the previous question about the, question Number 24 where it says, "Conditional use, but shall be revocable if an encroachment permit." The language is a little vague there. It says, "To the satisfaction of the Public Works Director." What would be the process by which it would be revoked? I assume we're not given the authority to revoke a conditional use permit to the Public Works Director, are we?
I interpret that a little different. The west side of the property, like most of the properties on the strand.
No, no, Mike, but very specifically to this language.
Right. But what I'm saying is that he could only revoke, my understanding, the public right-of-way issue, not the CUP issue. That's how I would interpret it anyhow. Talking to Number 25.
Right, 24 I'm reading.
Oh, 24.
Shall be revocable if an encroachment permit for the use is not secured. It doesn't say that portion of it related to any of those guys, it just says.
You're, yes, the drafting could be tightened up, but the, the intent is, as Commissioner Flaherty suggested.
Then let's make sure as we amend this or as we pursue this proposition, we'll catch that.
Right, thank you. And there's, if I could, there's two different areas of encroachment. One is on the west side of the property, where all the homes on the strand from the boundary to almost the boundary to 24th Street are encroached into a right-of-way by a couple feet, and that's the west side. And on the south side, there seems to be an encroachment where they have a parking program and a valet and so on and so forth. It may not be an encroachment, it's a use. So however you form it, I think that's by re-changing, by changing, getting rid of this conditional use permit word and just go with the encroachment word, you could address that. I, I agree with you, Pete, that conditional use permit is not going to be revoked by the Public Works Director. Only the encroachment area can be addressed.
Was there a question in there or that was just a comment?
Just, just a comment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
I do have a question, though. Thank you, Pete, for, for that. The Type 47 license that is currently being used allows the food and beverage service right currently, but the new language on Page Six, Number Eight, shall be to the primary hotel use and shall be limited to hotel guests and their guests. I don't think that's what's happening right now. Is this a condition that they would agree to?
All of the conditions for this project were shared with the applicant in advance, and they have integrated, indicated agreement with the conditions.
Okay, even though there may not be doing those right now?
That has been my correspondence with the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
And to be clear, I believe they have a 41 at this time and are hoping for a 47?
They have a 47, I believe.
No.
No, that's what we're, that's.
If they're approved, they'll seek a 47.
Correct.
They've got a 41 now.
Can staff clarify how the existing food and beverage operations are currently operating at the hotel?
For specific details on the existing operation, that question would be best directed to the applicant if it's not specific to the zoning standards.
But they are currently, they currently have a 4, what is it, a 41 license for beer and wine? That is something that goes through staff or that only goes through ABC?
It went through ABC.
Only through ABC. And is it staff's understanding that the, I think it was Commissioner Izant who brought it up, that this restaurant is solely to serve hotel guests and their guests and not the general public?
Yes, that's how we have it conditioned with Condition of Approval Number Eight. That coincides with the interpretation that the use is incidental and subordinate to the primary.
Okay. And one further clarification that Commissioner Hoffman brought up. The staff report mentions that restaurant uses are allowable in the C1 zone. Can you clarify, sorry, and alcohol is allowed to be consumed in the C1 zone. Can you confirm or clarify whether alcohol sales in the C1 zone are limited to interior and what the position of staff is on, for C1 specifically, for live entertainment?
In terms of the on-sale alcohol, so again, legal nonconforming with regards to the on-sale alcohol. Beer and wine has been permitted previously, so that on-sale alcohol is a legal nonconforming use by way of the restaurant that is permitted in our restaurants with on-sale alcohol beverage closing by 10:00 is a permitted use in the zone and all. And late night hours can be permitted with a CUP if I'm correct, yes. So in staff's determination, again, this is limited and narrow and ancillary to the hotel use, so the conversion with the CUP is how that is allowed. And again, staff also determined that the entertainment could be permitted as an ancillary use. However, should the commission find differently, that that's an intensification as it wasn't as clearly maybe permitted as the on-sale alcohol, then certainly the commission could find differently on that.
I'm just trying to understand if, if they're building something new and it's a C1 zone. Does the C1 allow for outdoor consumption of alcohol and does the C1 zone allow for live entertainment outdoors?
So as a new use, you could have a restaurant with on-sale alcohol. With regards to the outdoor uses, the entertainment is not permitted outdoors, and...
As the accessory incidental use, that is how the live entertainment gets weaved into this specific proposal. Regarding the restaurant with beer and wine closing by 10:00 PM or earlier, you, you brought up a scenario in which case there would be a brand-new development on-site, fully existing and conforming. The restaurant with on-sale beer and wine closing by 10:00 PM or earlier is a permitted use by right within that zone. And outdoor uses may be permitted via conditional use permit. The default standard for uses that are permitted by right is that they be enclosed on all sides within a building, but the municipal code in the commercial uses section states that any deviation from those standards for outdoor uses may be permitted by conditional use permit.
Okay, so alcohol sales could, would require a CUP for this hypothetical new development and live, sorry, I missed the live entertainment. That would be permitted via CUP or that's prohibited?
So in the baseline zone, limited live entertainment is permitted by right indoors.
Okay.
Outdoors would be a deviation from that standard, which is permitted via CUP.
Thank you for the clarification.
And could I just make sure that the statement was clear? She asked about alcohol, you said beer and wine. Am I correct that beer and, excuse me, that on-sale alcohol, spirits, is not permitted in the C1 zone?
So if her spirits is a standalone use, then that would be correct. In this particular proposal, we're talking about it as an accessory incidental use, not a standalone use.
And would the, would the inclusion of spirits be permitted with the CUP?
In this scenario, are we talking about the hypothetical development?
Yes, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to get parameters around C1.
So in a new development, say the site was vacant today, ground-up new proposal, spirits would not be allowed in a, in a brand-new use?
Okay.
Only with beer and wine closing by 10:00 PM or sooner, which would be a permitted by right use?
Thank you for the clarification, okay. I don't have further questions of staff. Does anybody else have questions of staff? Okay, none? Okay. All right. Do any of my fellow commissioners have disclosures to make? This could be site visits, conversations, or other evidence received before the meeting that's not in the staff report that could affect the decision of the commission on this matter?
I visited the site. I had the pleasure of talking to the general manager and the restaurant manager for about two or three minutes. They gave me permission to walk the site. I did so. That was it.
I visited the site, but I did not interact with anyone.
Same with me, site visit?
The same, I've gone by 15 times probably in the last month.
Yeah, I've visited the site many times, I've enjoyed it, and one of the bartenders is a culinary student of mine when I taught.
All right, we're now going to begin the public comment portion of the hearing. All questions and comments on this matter are going to be directed to the commission, not to the audience. If the applicant is present, please approach the podium and make your presentation.
Which one am I supposed to use? This one?
All three, point all three. One of them will work.
I like the previous presenter, I don't need a mic, but anyway, good evening. My name is Steve Rollings. I am here representing the Sea Sprite Hotel Group. I am a consultant assisting them with permitting for alcohol licenses. Joining me today are Marina Bollonge. She is the general manager that's been at the hotel for five years now. We have Chuck Valentino, who is the Vice President of Operations for the hotel. Scott Sorensen, Taylor Bennett, who are part of the ownership group, and there are several other owners here in attendance here. They put together a group of folks, they are from the South Bay, and they've owned this property for a lot of years, and they put together a group and purchased the property. And some of the partners in that are, I know are Hermos Beach residents as well. I do have a brief presentation. Mostly it's pictures. Is that going to come up? And I put this together at the benefit of, in case nobody has visited the site, so I won't spend a lot of time on those. Is it up, Jake?
Yes, just a quick moment.
Okay. As, as, as we're getting this, I've worked with a lot of hotel groups over the years up and down the state of California, and it is very, very common for hotels to have many, many different ancillary uses. Eaterys, restaurants, coffee shops, gyms, and so on and so forth. And this was brought about to enhance the hotel. As you can see, there's the photo of it. If you can go to the next slide is what I really want to talk a little bit about. It is a little bit befuddling to me that this became a, a legal nonconforming use. In 1907, the north end of the property was built as a hotel, and then the main hotel was built in 1957. It has run consecutively. It's never been closed down, and this group came in in 2018. How the zoning changed where there wasn't going to be an accommodation for a hotel is a little bit befuddling to me because it's, it's there, it's been there. I don't think anybody in the community has ever had a vision of it being anything other than a hotel. And so there are some technical issues with the zoning code that I've talked to staff a little bit about. Since the ownership group bought it in 2018, they have invested $15 million. And I'm not talking, that's without considering the actual purchase price of the property. That's in capital improvements. Many of you may realize, hey, remodeling of hotels is very, very expensive because you have a lot of... you have a lot of finishes. You've got 35 rooms that you have to take care of, and bathroom fixtures cost a lot of money, and so on and so forth. Recently, they spent $5 million on this last renovation project, which was major. They put in a new commercial kitchen. There were some big challenges construction-wise. It was built down below the ground. You had to get, you had to drain into a grease interceptor. That caused a bit of a problem. They, I think they struck some water, so on and so forth. With that said, though, they got through the project, and I think that everyone, everybody I've talked to, I've heard it from you folks, I've talked to people in the community, everybody loves it. They think it's fabulous. It is definitely an asset that has been improved and improves the entire community and improves all of Hermosa Beach. I'll go through just a couple of quick slides here. I don't want to bore you with all of those. That's the new lobby area that they did. I do want to point out that there is a valet stand, so we do offer valet parking. There is parking that we take the cars down to that's not very far away. Next slide. Obviously, this is the main area. Everything's outdoors. We'll get to a slide about the indoors, but most of you have been there. Very, very limited seating in there. Next slide. That's a view of the little bar area. Next slide. And again, that's a nice area to sit. There's a little fire pit there, and it's been used quite a bit. And just two more slides real quick. Again, that's the rest of the property. Everything in this dining situation is outdoors. There are very, very limited seats. Next slide. I think this is the slide that has the indoor. Oh, no, that's our terrace. Sorry about that. One more. All right. Well, we're good. I think everybody has seen the property there. But I think that it's important that people know that there was no cost, there was no sparing of costs here. They did the whole thing right. There's a big investment in this thing. And the restaurant component has been added. We do currently sell beer and wine. And that's a little bit different than the situation that we had before. We have been operating with beer and wine. And honestly, we have received very minimal complaints. I'll start talking about some of the issues that you guys have brought up. One is noise. We have issues with noise coming from the beach. There are some big boom boxes out there, and we've had some of our own guests complain about the noise. And we're like, well, it's out on the beach. What can we do about it? So when we talk about the calls for services over the year, you know, over the last 18 months, it's addressed to our property, but that doesn't mean it came from our property nor does it mean it had anything to do with our operation. Police department comes in for a report of vagrancy out on the beach, so on and so forth. We happen to be a very convenient address for them to use. But since we've opened up the restaurant, we have not heard of any complaints. We did meet with Captain Cahalan out on the site, I believe it was on April the 1st or April the 2nd of this year. And we walked him through the property. We did discuss our request for live entertainment. And, you know, the conversation was very productive. And of course, his concern was, we think you guys are great operators, we're not going to have an issue, but 20 years from now, if you don't own the property, who are we dealing with? So he asked us to come back with more of a, to be controls there. Obviously, we do have guest ambassadors, fancy name for security guards. We have one, and the hours are already pre-stated, and that person will be there. It's great to have that type of person there because you don't like to necessarily put your servers or your bartenders in that position. It's nice to have, quote, "the bad guy" that might come over and talk to somebody and say, hey, we can't, you know, we can't serve you any longer. In addition to that, you know, we have comprehensive surveillance cameras. But the other part of what I wanted to talk about in terms of controlling the activity there, it's a very small place. You can literally stand any place on that patio and see everybody that's there, which is very, very important because there are restaurants, there's other uses where the, you know, the bartenders, the management staff can't see what's going on. We have an opportunity to see everything. Our bartenders from the bar can see out, obviously, our servers can. And as I mentioned, we have a guest ambassador that can, that will be walking around and checking out behavior and so on and so forth. We do concur with the, you know, staff's recommendation, and we have talked a lot about this being an ancillary use. As I mentioned before, many hotels have an operation like this. Our primary target customers, obviously, are travelers and business travelers. One thing that we've learned about business travelers, while the Hermosa Hotel obviously has a certain clientele with business, there's also people that come into town that like to stay at boutique hotels, that are a little bit more quiet, and that's what we think we offer. Our rates are going to be, I think the list rate now is above $500 per night. I've stayed in hotels like that. They're very self-policing. Our primary focus is on the hotel room. Trust me, if I'm wakened up at 1:00 in the morning, I'm marching down there, and somebody's going to get an earload because I paid $500 to get a good night's sleep. And this hotel has been operating. We haven't had any issues. From the management staff, we certainly do send our servers home at 10:00, so we don't have a lot of late-night activity that's going on at this particular hotel. There's a lot of controls that have been put in place with, through the conditions of approval. I do, since it's been brought up, I do want to talk a little bit about guests and guests of guests in terms of the service there. We had been operating in the idea that guests are people that we have, to your point, a day membership or something along those lines. That's been our interpretation of that condition. It did, Jake and I have spoken, and I believe that staff is trying, is wanting it to be a little bit more stringent than that. But I look at it and say, we've invested $15 million in this property. Why shouldn't a person from the city of, that lives here be able to come in and get a cup of coffee or get something to eat? It's like dangling this exclusive club out to everybody, and I think the people do want to go there. I understand. I think a few of you have been regulars there. We would like to continue to be able to do that. Also, it lends itself very well to, you know, functions. We had a chamber function there. I think it was a smashing success. We had quite a few people there. I know that Taylor hosted some folks that were having to do with a Navy SEAL type of charity there recently, and we're looking to be able to continue on that. So we might as well talk a little bit about the interpretation of that. We currently do serve to the outside public, and we haven't had any particular issues with that. We do give preference to our hotel guests. If somebody says, I'm staying here, we find a table for them very, very quickly. We monitor the activity by, we put limits, two-hour limits. So it's not like you could just show up in the afternoon and sit there and watch the activity at the beach for four and five hours. We put a two-hour table turn on all of our tables there, which is effective at making sure that people are there just for an experience and leaving rather than just hanging on. In terms of the live entertainment, we're not anticipating that we're going to have live entertainment every day, every night. We're looking for some flexibility to be able to possibly add that. Been to plenty of places for Sunday morning brunches, and there's always a little bit of music. I think it adds to the experience. Sometimes there's a evening crowd. Having a, you know, two-person live entertainment as opposed to the music that we're playing adds to the experience. We're not saying that, hey, we're booking people there every single night, every single week at all. We're looking for just simply for some special occasions, Mother's Day. Be nice to have some type of entertainment beyond the ambient speakers that we have there. I also wanted to point out that this hotel has been serving alcohol. We think, just before COVID? We operated with a Type 70 license and a Type 66 license. A Type 70 license is called a manager's reception, common at business-type of hotels. The hotel is free to offer beer, wine, and distilled spirits, not without money changing hands. Most of the time, it's built into somebody's hotel bill. And that's been occurring since COVID. In addition to that, the Type 66 license allowed us to have the refrigerators, and in the refrigerators, we've had the ability to sell airline-size alcohol. And that has been going on, and it was completely legal. And there hasn't been issues with that. So we would certainly like the opportunity. We're already operating, I think, a wonderful restaurant as part of the hotel. I think that we've demonstrated that, hey, there are no problems at this place, a little bit unlike some of the, you know, establishments just down the street. This is, you know, a different clientele that we've had there, a different type of traveler that has come in there, and we haven't, and we haven't had the problems. And we're not looking to be late-night. We're closing the patio down by 10:00. Everybody's off of that patio. We wanted the flexibility of inside for people to possibly continue to, you know, maybe enjoy a glass of wine, but that's on the inside space only. We're not letting anybody out onto the patio after 10:00. So with that said, I think this was a great, this is a great piece of property. I think it's a big asset to the company. I think that we've demonstrated that we've got a plan in place for managing our operations, not just us, but in the future as well. And we hope that you can find it to support us. With that, I'm available for any questions. And obviously, as I mentioned, I have quite a bit of our management and ownership team here.
Thank you. Does anyone else from the applicant team want to present at this time? Or are we, okay. Okay.
My name is Scott Sorensen. I don't, I don't really have anything to formally present. I think Steve has done a good job with presenting it for us. But I just want to say that I think I got involved with the Sea Sprite in the ownership seven years ago, and the place was dilapidated. But all of us live in the South Bay, either Hermosa Beach or Manhattan Beach. I've personally been down, lived here since '93, so it's a special place for me. And so we, we put together this ownership group to come in and take over this iconic asset and reinvigorate it, which I think that we've done. It's taken us seven years. And honestly, if anybody was any sort of commercial developer, they would not do that. It's just too painful a process. But I think with, what we've come out with has been incredibly special. We've created an environment that all of us are proud to go to. We bring our family and our friends. It's a place that we've created that we think is an adult place, that you want to go, watch the sunset, have some wine, have a mixed drink, and be able to have a conversation. It's unlike, you know, I don't want to disparage Sharkies or other places, but it's not those places. You guys have all been there, and I think, you know, you're our target audience. So this, you know, it's taken us a lot of, lot of time, probably 3X the amount of money that we ever planned on spending on the project. And we just want to take it, that next step, and finish the project. And this is kind of it. And I don't want to take up too much time because I know there's a lot of other people here, and I don't want to take up their time either, so.
Thank you. All right. We are going to move to, I think we're going to hear a public comment first, unless you want to switch it up. Usually, we do public comment, then applicant comes back, and then we ask the questions.
I'm just wondering if my question is, if the answers of the applicant might help inform those that come to testify after?
If there are no objections, then let's, okay, let's ask questions of the applicant now, if you wouldn't mind coming back up.
Mr. Rollins, the plan that we have submitted does not indicate where the musicians are going to play. Our ordinance requires a specific floor plan, and so consequently, can you indicate where they're going to play? And of course, obviously, you would need to submit a revised plan.
I can hand this and you can pass it around. And that was an oversight, and Jake and I talked about that today there. It would be on the first floor over by the server station, facing out toward the beach, not back to the rooms or anything along those lines. I kind of put a general X as to where the location would be. Gives us a little bit of space. We don't have to move tables very much. And the sound would be headed out toward the beach.
I'm looking on, you mentioned the server station. Is this on the outside of the interior space? I don't see something that specifically says.
Right here.
Ah.
In that generalized area.
Okay. All right.
So just for the benefit of people in the chambers and online, the proposed music location is essentially where the two stairwells meet in between the planters facing out towards the beach.
Offhand, do you happen to know the relationship between your food sales to wine and beer sales for the month of July?
Well, unofficially, I do think that our alcohol sales make up a little bit more than 50% of the sales. And, but that is, that's mostly indicative because at this time of year, we're getting a lot of travels, travelers that are on vacation. And all of us know that when you get on vacation, you're likely to enjoy a glass of wine a little more often than you might if you are on a business trip or so on and so forth. And that's pretty customary.
That was an eloquent hedge. Could you be a little more specific? Are we talking 65, 35 for alcohol?
60.
Maybe 60.
60, 40. Okay. Thank you.
Somewhere between 55 and 60% is alcohol sales currently, and then the food is the restaurant.
We've had some...
I'd just like to say, it's, I don't know how relevant it is for food and beverage to the overall revenue. I mean, the hotel, it's a hotel first, and the revenue from the hotel far exceeds what we make in beer and wine or alcohol.
I totally understand. I think the city is just, not that you guys were going to do it, but we've had very specific concerns about alcohol to food sales on Pier Plaza, and consequently, we monitor that fairly closely. And I'm going to be extreme for a second. Obviously, we would, I shouldn't say obviously. I wouldn't be in favor of a proposal that was going to have a 70% liquor ratio to a 30% food ratio. I don't care what the room sales are. I just don't want a huge beach bar.
Yeah. I also want to point out, our business is different than any other restaurant that's down there. We're, the hotel business is massively seasonal. So the property loses money probably six months out of the year. And so having, having food and beverage as some ancillary revenue source helps us stay afloat. So that's just a side note.
I hope you sell a heck out of the food. Your proposed hours of operation for just the music, noon to 6:00 PM, Monday through Thursday, Friday and Saturday, 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM. We've had some letters that complained about the recorded music. Offhand, do you know what hours the recorded music operates?
Yeah. It goes, it's, it will go throughout the day, but I can assure you, I mean, if any of you have been down there, there is no possible way that somebody could hear the recorded music beyond the property unless you are right in front of the strand, walking on the strand. We've added multiple speakers around the property so we can bring the volume down. So somebody that, so we don't have to turn it up so somebody on the other side can listen to the music. And as far as the live entertainment, I don't even know if we ever plan on doing it, but And as far as the live entertainment, I don't even know if we ever plan on doing it, but it would be nice to have that option, to have somebody strumming a guitar for Mother's Day or something, you know? We just don't want to limit ourselves on that ability.
Thank you, gentlemen. Chair Hirsch, that concludes my current questions.
Question for the applicant. What are the current operating hours of the restaurant?
Same as what we're proposing, right? It's 10 o'clock.
Okay. And it's midnight on the inside?
Yeah. Oh, it's currently 10. Everything closes, all the food service closes down at 10 o'clock.
Are there other questions of the applicant at this time?
No.
None? Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this item? Just a reminder that you have up to three minutes, and after we accept public comment from the chambers, we will turn to any call-in comments. Please announce, state your name.
My name is, excuse me, my name is Gretchen Corbell. I've been a resident in Hermosa since 1997, and I'm here to support this resolution to grant the Sea Sprite Hotel the permit to allow outdoor dining and amplified music and onsite sale of beer, wine, and liquor. The recent remodel of the Sea Sprite has been an incredible example of thoughtful development. It honored the charm and character of the original beloved hotel that we all love in Hermosa, but it embraced it in a way that made it even more inviting to both us, the locals, and visitors. You know, it enhanced our beachfront, but it's also a boost to our economy. So, it's so beautiful. It's now a space that attracts not only visitors, but it's also a gathering place for us, the local residents. I've taken my parents there when they come to visit. I celebrated my anniversary there. I think everybody will really enjoy it. I think a full liquor license and some outdoor music would allow the Sea Sprite to be a complete hospitality experience. It would attract more visitors and encourage longer stays of those visitors. That benefits not only them, but all the nearby businesses and our community as a whole. You know, whether we're there with our friends, whether the community is attending events there, or just enjoying that beautiful spot on the beach, I think it's really poised to be a really vibrant part, vibrant part of our community. I think allowing this is just the next step forward for this development, and I hope you'll support it. Thank you.
Just anyone? Okay. Good evening. My name is Robin Saint Germain, and I am a fairly new resident to Hermosa Beach, but having closed escrow on my new home over the holidays of last year. But I've been an active 30-plus member of the South Bay, having moved from Manhattan Beach to Hermosa. I raised my two kids in Manhattan Beach. They're graduates of Miracosta. I've been very involved in our community for many years. I was a PTSA president at Costa, MBX president, and of course Booster Club presidents. Most recently, I was working at Miracosta and working for the district as Miracosta's registrar, and now I sit there whenever they need me. I love the South Bay, and I'm especially enamored with Hermosa. This community is truly special, and its establishments, such as Surfer Girl at the Sea Sprite, make this town even more unique and more desirable. Surfer Girl and the Sea Sprite is not only bringing in locals, but bringing in people to our community from all over. Surfer Girl at the Sea Sprite is such a welcome and great addition to Hermosa Beach, a place to go, sit outside, admire our incredible views, and have a nice meal and a drink. I've been several times since its opening, and so many of my friends have too. I'm not quite sure I understand the opposition of a full liquor license or live music for Surfer Girl at the Sea Sprite. I'm not quite sure I understand the difference between wine and beer and a full spirits menu, but I'd really like to understand why someone would so negatively affect a locally-owned business, potentially tying their hands against their competitors. As you know, there are many establishments along Pier Avenue and the South Strand that have a full liquor license and play live music. Why should Surfer Girl at the Sea Sprite be any different? Surfer Girl at the Sea Sprite is a well-run restaurant and hotel that has already proven itself as a responsible member of the community. As I mentioned, allowing them to expand to a full liquor license simply puts them on equal footing with these other establishments. In addition, it keeps consumer spending in our wonderful city, strengthens our local economy through jobs and tax revenue. Opposition to this license doesn't protect the community, it only hampers a small business trying to succeed. I urge the council to support entrepreneurship, fairness, growth by approving this license. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Michelle Randall, and my family has owned a beach house and built the beach house since 1939. We are 25 feet from Sea Sprite. We have known all the owners, except for the new ones. We do love what they've done with the place. It does look beautiful, but it is right next to a residential area. We have babies, we have children. We are used to a nice, quiet area. But primarily what I'm concerned about is there are laws in place to protect us, to protect encroachment. What I've just recently heard was talking about putting 15 million and how much money they did put into this property. They also said they're charging $500 a night, so all the normal people that we grew up next to can't afford it. And now we hear noise at night, and now we hear there's more people around. They don't have an indoor area. It's, even the little indoor they have has very large windows. Everything's open. And again, I really appreciate how nice it looks, but I think beer and wine was fine. We didn't really actually even get to vote on that. But I think that when you're allowing this, when there's already laws in place to protect us, then what stops it from encroaching and changing Hermosa completely? We already have a lot, a lot of wealth in here. We're just trying to survive the normal person. We've owned this home since 1939, and we do love to have a family environment. We're not asking that they can't have what they have now, but I don't see any reason to allow more, other than to line the pockets. They say outdoor visitors come in. There is always outdoor visitors coming into that motel. It was a motel, not a hotel. And so, I know that there's so much more I want to say, but I just want you to agree that the laws that are there are there to protect the longtime Hermosa Beach residents, the regular residents, and I hope that you will continue to do that for us, because big business, they can come in and really do what they want, it would seem, at this meeting. So, thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Matt Lyman. I'm here to represent my in-laws, my wife's parents, who live directly south from the Sea Sprite. They have owned and lived in that building since 1972, which is 53 years. Ever since I have known them, the Sea Sprite was this quaint little family-owned beachside motel. Even after the local family sold and the current owners remodeled, it still felt like the rest of the street, the majority of that street, most of the homes on that street, being the original small, single-story beach bungalows. The Sea Sprite was a quiet fixture of the community. Living at the beach does have its challenges sometimes. All the big summer holidays, festivals, movies, concert on the beach, bring a crazy amount of car and pedestrian traffic. When these come about, my in-laws know what to expect and can plan ahead. The idea that the Sea Sprite across the street would now be playing amplified music potentially every day of the week is something they can't live with and should not be allowed in any capacity. Any latitude given here will forever be too hard to police if we allow this to happen. The permitting of alcohol on top of that will only increase the noise and all the things that come with it. Two blocks north, we have the pier with all the bars, restaurants, and musics. No restaurants live close by, it'd be disturbed because that area is zoned for that use specifically. Where my in-laws live is not, and it should stay that way, a quiet beachside street. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Tom Coyle. I live at 818 Fourth Street. And to offer some context on that, if I was representing myself and where I live, I would have no issue with this use. But that's not what I'm concerned about. My daughter, who provides medical services, lives right across the street. She's a tenant, 55 feet from this use. My history before I retired to Hermosa Beach was a city planner, and the comments that Commissioner Hoffman had earlier were right on point. I do not believe this is an accessory use, and I believe based upon all the testimony today, the number of times I have heard expansion, new, addition, all represent something beyond the scale of what the C1 zone is on this property. Now, I haven't had the opportunity to coordinate my presentation with staff, but I would ask you to refer to the zoning map that's in your public hearing notes. This property is Zone C1. It is not Zone C2, and it's an outlier as far as that area goes. None of us were here, probably, when the decision to make this property C1 was made. But we can undo that legislative history, that public process, those decisions by the council, by approving this conditional use permit. The intent of the C1 zone is right on point. I hate to read to people, but it is so significant that it's valuable. Neighborhood commercial zone, to provide sites for a mix of small, local businesses appropriate for and serving the daily needs of nearby residential neighborhoods while establishing land use regulations that prevent significant adverse effects on abutting residential uses. There is your finding for denial. Second issue is non-conforming use. For a lot of years, I worked as an agency director in planning, and I have never seen the scope of work that has occurred, and I'm going to pass, again, I haven't had the opportunity to make a presentation, but this will show you before and after situation on a legal non-conforming use. They're not supposed to be doing the scale of activity. So you not only have the physical changes, but now you've got the use changes in front of you. And if you need any supporting information of that, you also have the intensity of the liquor sales. In retirement, I'm also a bartender. And let me tell you, the nature of the retail business significantly changes with the introduction of hard liquor. Thank you for your time.
First off, I want to thank you all for your volunteering. This is not an easy job you guys do, and I appreciate it every time I appear in front of you. Albro Lundey, Baker Burton Lundey across the street, but also 934 Strand, Hermosa Beach. Michelle's my cousin, and we are very close. I don't know, I actually let him sit in our front yard because we can hear the ambient, as he called it, music from there already. I don't know why in the world you need amplified live, they've already got that. But, I mean, let's be real, take a look at what they've done to it. It's a bar, right? Every time I go by, it's a bar. I mean, we're right there. I mean, we live right there. So, it's not hard to see that it's pushing alcohol sales. Every client I have down on the Pier Plaza, they're pushing alcohol sales because that's where they make their money, and it really does. They've got that, I mean, there is no interior. I mean, there really isn't. I mean, it's all open. If they put somebody interior, they're still exterior as far as the noise is concerned, as far as the traffic is concerned. And I wanted to talk a little bit about traffic, but first, they've got a roof deck on top of the interior, and that really is where the party is. So, you sit in our front yard, it is loud. I'm talking during the day, it's loud. You push it to the evening, and you really hear it, especially off-hours, when the noise of the strand is there. We've had to put up with the 2:00 closing time, and you all, a lot of you are around here, where we've had that, hey, no more spirits, right? I mean, I've been in front of you trying to get a spirit before, and it was denied. It was denied because beer and wine is perfectly fine for anything that a restaurant needs. Distilled spirits is shooters, and it creates, just what Tom said, it creates a party, a serious party, a loud party. That's what's going on here. And so, we definitely oppose that. You know, we didn't get a chance, actually, we didn't get noticed when they put in the restaurant and the beer and wine. I was surprised. When I walked by and I was looking at them serving beer and wine, I'm like, what happened to our notice? What happened to our ability to object? It didn't happen. We did not get noticed. Our neighbors did not get noticed. A number of our neighbors, because it is a quiet little, if you take a look at between 10th Street and 9th Street, it's just, the people there have owned their homes since 1930s, and it's family homes that are right there, literally next door to what's going to be a bar, and is a bar right now, but I mean even more so when you look at it. And that valet parking, right, they've already taken a lot of traffic in there, but they just leave the cars there. You know, they're piled up on 10th Street. We tried getting in on Sunday, and there were cars that prevented us from turning left, we call it the alley, but down Beach Avenue, I think. To get into our own property, I mean, we couldn't make it there. And then I pulled up yesterday, and they just leave the cars in the street. So, it's not operating in a way which we think should be intended to expand. We would like it to be a little smaller, to be honest with you, but that's our point. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Thank you so much for all you do. I'm Carly McCarron, and I'm a 27-year resident of Hermosa Beach, and I've raised three girls here and gone through the Hermosa Beach schools. It's a great place to live, but I do believe in change. I'm here tonight to express my support for Surfer Girl Restaurants' application for a liquor license and occasional music. It is a welcome new addition to our dining scene. It offers upscale experience that reflects the relaxed, yet sophisticated vibe we offer here in Hermosa Beach. It already serves beer and wine, and the service atmosphere and quality of food have been outstanding. Allowing them to expand to a full liquor license would enhance the experience, as well as I could have a drink, because I drink only hard alcohol. Not only for locals, but for tourists who come here to enjoy a great meal and a cocktail with one of the best V vibes in Southern California. It would also help support our local economy and keep business thriving in our community. We'd appreciate you approving this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hopefully, I have the right one now. Probably not very good. Eric Kleschichin. Again, been living here since about 2012, and been in the South Bay for over 35 years. And, you know, it's never been really a great place to have my family that's from out of town be able to go and stay and really enjoy the essence of Hermosa. And, you know, quite frankly, when my kids were little, the Sea Sprite was a little scary. I mean, you know, it was a little crazy out in front there. What's evolved now is something that I think the city can be really proud of. I love having my family come down. They have a cool place to go, they can see what Hermosa Beach is all about, see in the beach, see in the sunset, you know, getting air, having a little bit of music. It's, I've been down there a couple of times, and it's not, I don't think it's as exaggerated as sometimes I think it gets portrayed. And you know what? I think it would be kind of cool to have a little bit of music when you're, you know, on the special days that they're talking about. And it doesn't sound like they're, you know, booking REO Speedwagon or anything. It sounds like they, you know, would like a guitar or somebody, you know, doing something small, but just ambient. And I support it. My brother and my sister, when they come into town, they like beer, they like glass of wine, but they'd like a cocktail too, and I don't think it's too much to ask. We have really, you know, we have a vibe there at that hotel that rivals stuff in Santa Monica and Newport and, you know, Manhattan Beach. And, you know, let's enjoy it, and it doesn't have to get crazy, but I fully support it, and my family does as well. Thank you.
Anyone else in chambers that wishes to speak on this matter?
Thank you very much for your service. My name is Jeff Neer. Spelled wrong. It's an R. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. My friends from the West Side and on the Strand, certainly have a threat, you know, certainly they have a vested interest. But the times of what we're talking about, music, if it ever gets played, is over at 8:00. So you can turn on your show of Survivor. It's before- It's before primetime if it starts, all right? So the music aspect of this, I don't think the idea that the music is going to cause some nuisance in your lives on a daily basis, I think is overplayed. The other thing I'd suggest is, staff has spent extensive time, and all five of the factors are checked off as to why this conditional use permit ought to be done. Nothing I've heard today changes that, right? The conforming, the use that is proposed here is certainly something that staff has, upon measured, reasoned, and, you know, investigation has determined, checks off all of the factors. And nothing here that we've heard is going to change that. So I thank you very much for your time.
Good evening, John Barry. I'm here in support of the applicant, who I don't know, never spoken to. I don't know that I'm here in support of the application. I find it quite troublesome, and I'm going to explain to you why. I'm also here in support of an amazing shrimp pasta, which I had at lunchtime today. I visited for the first time, and it was one of the best dining experiences that we'd had in this city for a very long time. But I should get it while I can, because of course, once this CUP is approved as written, it becomes illicit, or illegal, or forbidden for me as a taxpaying resident of this city to enjoy that shrimp pasta anymore. So what I would have to do is, I'd have to, you know, slip a sly twenty bucks to a paying guest and say, hey, will you invite me in as a guest of a guest? Or I'll have to pay five hundred dollars and book a room, and the shrimp pasta was really good, but it's not that good. The word accessory seems to be very central to this subject. And yet, staff tonight are using the word accessory, ancillary, and incidental, as though they're completely interchangeable, right? So what is accessory use, and how germane is it to this subject? Because if you go and you do what I did at lunchtime and have a nice meal there, you can be in no doubt, you are accessory to a thirty-five-room hotel. There's rooms everywhere, and there's a few tables. You're having your lunch, you are an accessory to the main event, which is a hotel. It's obvious. Now, one or two things must be true here. Either you mean it, and the application means it, I can't have my pasta as a taxpaying resident, or we're knowingly colluding together to create rules that we know are going to be broken. And I think that's a very slippery slope. So are we literally endorsing a situation where code enforcement have come around and asked to see my room key? Really? We're gonna go down a road where we're going to allow discretion? And by the way, and I have twenty-seven seconds left, all I would say to the applicant is if you think that you're going to start down this road, and it'll be okay, and you'll get granted something else later on, learn the lessons of the H2O Hotel. Because that's the last one who went down that road, and they ended up being the victims of a very vindictive campaign by one council member, and they weren't able to do what they should have been able to do from the start.
Hi, Chairperson, Vice Chairperson, and Commissioners. My name's Chris Jenks. I've been in, I moved to Hermosa Beach in 1993, and I've lived in this community for, basically, ever since then. J E N K S. About seven years ago, we moved to a house directly behind the Bottle Inn, so on Hermosa Bottle Inn's a great restaurant. We never have had an issue with people coming behind us, noise, anything like that. They only serve beer and wine. I like martini, and I like bourbon. The Sea Sprite has been around for a long, long time. My mom used to stay here when she'd visit me. My brother, when he got married, all the family stayed there. And the renovations that have been made have been incredible. And Hermosa Beach should be lucky to have a hotel like this. And for me to have the ability with my family to ride my bike down there, have some great food, see the view, have some drinks, you know, half the reason Hermosa Beach is so great is because of the ocean and the views that we have. We don't have enough restaurants, we don't have enough restaurants and bars that have views. So this is a great place, and it's a great thing for Hermosa Beach and the residents. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairperson, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. My name is Darrell Greenwald, and I live at 3210th Street. I was born in 1975, and I've lived in that house for forty-nine years. Full disclosure, my family is part of the old ownership group of the Sea Sprite Motel. They used to operate it before the new ownership took over. I personally don't have any ownership, current or old, in the motel, or any vested interest in the success of this application. I'm just here as a resident of Hermosa Beach and a concerned neighbor. And although I share many of the concerns that some of my other neighbors have shared with the commission tonight, I haven't experienced any of the issues that they say, that they've heard noise coming from the restaurant. I live approximately two hundred feet from the restaurant. My bedroom windows overlook the patio and the entrance to the restaurant. I've had about a dozen meals there since it opened in May, and I've had the opportunity to get to know the ownership and the management of the motel, which is a little bit interesting because you don't normally get that when you go somewhere. But they're actively involved, and they're onsite, and they run a really first-class operation. You know, as the old family that used to run it, it's a big improvement. For me to say that, it's truly a first-class operation and an asset to the city of Hermosa Beach. And I think you've heard some of the residents here speak to that. And while I've had issues with noise and intoxicated people in my neighborhood, over the forty-nine years that I've lived there, I've seen quite a few disturbing things. I haven't seen anything like that coming from the Sea Sprite since they've taken it over and started operating it. And, you know, I just, I want to say that, based on the plan that's before the commission, I think it's a reasonable plan. I think the hours are reasonable. I think the request for music and alcohol is a reasonable request, and I just come here in support of it. I've had many guests come in the last few months, and I've taken several of them to the Sea Sprite, and it's just been an outstanding experience. The food's great. I'm not a big alcohol drinker, but I've been there for breakfast, lunch, brunch, and dinner. And it would be nice to have an opportunity to have a Bloody Mary with my brunch, or to have a pina colada during sunset. And the last person spoke about the views, and it's true, there's not a lot of beachfront commercial in Hermosa Beach. And I think what they've done with it is great, and I support that, and I hope the commission would support it too.
Good evening. Rob Antrobius, twenty-nine-year resident and homeowner in Hermosa Beach. Also raised my children here. But I'm here tonight in support of this, the Sea Sprite. This hotel is a perfect example of how our great city and your leadership continues to move us forward. Time and time again, we keep seeing local investors put their money right back here in the city. Bottle Inn was mentioned, Martha's, Uncorked, Tiki Kai. Places like that are all local investors that have a vested interest, and it's great to see our money staying here, and again, in large part to this commission and the leadership you're showing us. The Sea Sprite has been another shining example of this. A group of South Bay families that came together, upgraded, reimagined, excuse me, reimagined our landmark in the city of Hermosa Beach, and they did a great job. Full disclosure also, I'm an investor in business down in downtown Hermosa Beach, but I have no financial interest in the Sea Sprite. I just want to see it succeed. Now, should we consider these liquor licenses very carefully? Absolutely. I love what I'm seeing tonight. Hard questions, details, et cetera, are being considered, which we absolutely should do. We should also, frankly, consider the operators. The operators of the Sea Sprite are our neighbors, and so they have a clear vested interest to see this succeed, but also implement and operate the business in a way that is, provides a safe and considerate operation for all the residents of Hermosa Beach, which they do, and I have full faith that they will continue to do so. The Sea Sprite has basically delivered on all the promises. Look what they did. They promised this committee and the city that they would revitalize this site, and they've done it, and done a fantastic job of it. I'm very proud to be a Hermosa resident and not only walk by this property, but all the other properties and the forward-thinking approvals this committee has provided. So thank you for that. For these reasons, I strongly suggest, or I strongly urge you to approve this for the Sea Sprite. And it's not really just about business. It's also about getting people to continue to want to invest in our own backyard. The money stays here, and it's so great to see that. So again, appreciate your consideration for this, and I'm really happy how the Sea Sprite has turned out for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment in chambers? All right, seeing none, we will move to see if there's anyone online that wishes to speak.
We have two hands raised, the first of which is Anthony Higgins. Anthony, you are unmuted.
Just a couple very quick comments again. It, they said there were fifteen complaints about noise, maybe a barking dog. If there were fifteen registered complaints, there were probably ten times that number of people that were annoyed and didn't call. Now, what I don't really understand, and maybe it's impractical, is why don't you survey the local residents and find out if the residents actually have a problem? Why guests? It wouldn't be hard to survey the residents within earshot. I think the whole idea of guests and guests of guests needs definition. If I'm a guest, can I invite fifty people? Or can I invite four? What are the limits? You know, it just needs better, better definition. And that's really all I have to say. I don't buy that if there is a noise problem that is caused by the boom boxes. And I want to remind you, if there is a noise problem, basically, the only choice a resident has, not the only choice, but what usually happens is you end up closing your window. And, you know, I mean, we live in Hermosa for the wonderful sea breezes. So, you know, and I, it just seems like it's a little bit convoluted, the approval process. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else online?
Thank you, Anthony. We had another hand raised too. So the next in line will be Laura Pena. Laura, you are unmuted.
Hi, yes, Laura Pena, resident business owner. I had many of my family come from out of state and for a reunion, and I recommended that they stay at the Sea Sprite. Because to me, it represents one of the best of Hermosa. It's a welcoming, professional, they really enjoyed their experience. They were able to walk to restaurants, they did shopping, they created memories that they're going to take back with them. To be successful, Sea Sprite's renovation, by adding the Surfer Girl Restaurant, needs the same tools that thriving coastal hotels offer: music, dining, which comes with a cocktail for some. Music, whether it's low-level, a guitar, creates atmosphere. It enhances the dining experience. It draws the visitors and residents to spend time and money locally. Isn't this what we say we want? Neighboring coastal cities like Manhattan Beach and Modondo have demonstrated that restaurants that manage live music and alcohol servants increase vibrancy and contribute to a strong tourism economy. That's why I'm concerned about several of the conditions tied to tonight's CUP. As written, they appear to be overly subjective and frankly, not very business-friendly. If our goal is to help our hospitality thrive, some of these restrictions can work against us. Condition two prohibits rearranging the furniture unless the city allows it. How many of you have been in a restaurant and you needed to pull up a chair? You need to give this business flexibility. As long as ADA paths and occupancy are respected, hospitality businesses need flexibility to serve maybe a larger party. Condition number seven requires all patrons to vacate service areas when closing. This means that even hotel guests can't sit outside quietly reading a book. Not very friendly. And then the condition that everybody seems to be talking about, which is number eight, it limits food and beverage service to only hotel guests and guests of guests. So are we asking code enforcement to check IDs? Why would Hermosa limit dining options and restrict locals from spending money in a local business? The owner has clearly stated that for six months, it operates at a loss. So here, a business has invested millions in our city, and they are telling you what they need, and it's an industry standard. So please, help them. Let's choose to be a city that welcomes, not over-regulates. Tonight, you have the chance to show our city supports our businesses, trusts its partners, and is committed to thriving as both a community and a destination. Let's not hold the Sea Sprite back. Let's let it lead. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other online comments? Steve Hunt, we've unmuted you. If you can please unmute yourself.
Did that work?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great, thank you very much. I'm here with my wife, Janine Hunt. We've owned a home within a block of the Sea Sprite and residents there for over fifty years. We've worked on different committees with the city of Hermosa Beach and been actively involved, raised our children there. We are adamantly opposed to this extension and expansion of the Sea Sprite. Certainly, we're asking simply that you respect the privacy and the quiet and peace of enjoyment of our home for residents that live nearby. I don't know how many of those that the hotel recruited or that chose on their own accord to come speak, other than Darrell Greenwald. I don't know if they live nearby, but certainly, they can go home and have a nice peaceful rest. But if they lived as close as we do to the Sea Sprite, they would have already noticed the concerns we have from beer and wine, and partying, and the upper deck where we've at times seen so many people, it's a party scene. So we simply just ask the commission to keep this C1 zone as it's zoned and deny this request. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no other hands raised.
All right. At this time, does the applicant wish to address any of the public comments that we received tonight before we close the public hearing?
Certainly. Good evening again. There we go. I appreciate everybody who's come out this evening and expressed, you know, both sides of the thought process here, both in support and some people having some serious concerns here. We aim to be very, very good neighbors. And obviously, we have some people that are close by that have some deep concerns about the activity level there. Our request was for some live entertainment. We asked for two, you know, two amplifiers. I'm here after hearing the conversations that we certainly would be more than happy to withdraw the request for any type of amplification. And that would just limit us then to somebody playing a guitar. And I certainly hope that that alleviates some of the concerns that we're not trying to make this a dance club or some kind of place to come and watch music. There's other places in the community to do that. We're just looking to be able to provide a little bit of elevated experience. And we can certainly accomplish that without any amplified noise. If we could, you know, get some consideration to being able to allow some acoustics there. And I think that that would go a long ways in alleviating some of the concerns, at least that I heard. It was about noise, it was about noise, it was about noise. And I certainly have been to a lot of places where there's acoustic guitar players and it's appropriate and it's not too loud. And we don't do late hours. We, if people are concerned about weekend evenings, we can certainly stop the music by 6:00 PM on weekends as well. We think 6:00 PM during the week is pretty early anyway, but on weekends, if people are concerned that there's going to be, you know, more activity, we're certainly willing to, you know, work with them and try to make sure that we're not a nuisance when it comes to noise. With that, I also want to, I appreciated Mr. Burry's comments about our shrimp pasta. That was certainly nice to hear, but we certainly want him to come back. And I certainly would appreciate it if the commission could maybe craft a way in which we can accommodate the locals. Everybody who's spoken has been there. They love the place, they're diners. And it would be nice to have that local clientele. As I had mentioned before, we had, we had always interpreted guests as, well, we can, we can charge a guest fee and then allow people in. That's done at a lot of hotels and maybe that's a solution. So with that, I don't think I have anything else to add. Appreciate your consideration on this and obviously still available for any questions.
Thank you. Before we close the public comment portion of the hearing, just want to bring it back to the commission and see if there's any questions of applicant, or if we've exhausted our questions. None? None? Okay. I will now close the public comment portion of this hearing and bring the matter back to the commission for discussion and deliberation. Commissioner Flaherty, how about you kick us off?
Well, the big three or four questions were obviously the music and having no amplified music solves the issue for me. The hours of operation on page six of 11 show outdoor dining till 10:00 PM daily with alcohol service, indoor dining till midnight. Live entertainment now is going to be, or as applicant has agreed to, 12:00 PM to 6:00 on Monday, Thursday, and 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM on Friday to Sunday. I don't have a problem with that. I also don't have a problem with having non, hotel guests utilize their restaurant and outdoor eating area. I think it's a service for the general Hermosa public. The Type 47, I don't have a problem with that either. So, the big three or four, I'm in agreement with. I have a little bit of a problem with the midnight with the indoor dining on Monday. It looks like it's daily, so seven days a week till midnight. I'd rather have everything as they're doing today. They're doing it till 10:00. So, 10 o'clock across the board would solve a lot of problems. It makes it easier to figure out when it opens and when it's closed. If they agree to that, then I certainly would agree with the music, no amp, with the open to public, and 6 o'clock live entertainment. So, those are my comments.
Thank you. Vice Chair Isant?
Thank you, Chair Hirsch. So, I first feel compelled to comment on Commissioner Hoffman's observations, which as usual are on point and interesting, but it's not something I think that I can solve or tackle tonight because I don't have the expertise or background. The point that did stick with me is, what city council made the decision to make this C1? In fairness, the Sea Sprite pointed out, they were built in what, 1917? They've been there. So it's on, it's on, I'm just being humorous. Let me get to the specifics. I would be amenable to totally eliminating number eight, which says that it's only limited to hotel residents and their guests. Now, you're probably not going to have a lot of folks from Torrance saying, hey, let's drive down to the Sea Sprite for their, I mean, Sea Sprite for their shrimp and pasta. But you probably are going to have a number of local Hermosa residents that are going to walk down there and want to do that. So, I wouldn't be adverse to just totally eliminating that. From the standpoint of no amplification, I think that's an excellent concession. And since it's no amplification, I don't mind the 8:00 PM finish date on Saturday and Sunday because it's no amplification. So in general, I'm supportive, but I think we need a little tweaking.
Thank you. Commissioner Hoffman?
If I was smart, I would simply say, Mr., I believe it was Coyle, I apologize if I forgot your name, he pretty much summarized my points. And I think I made my position kind of clear at the beginning of all of this, but I don't know enough to keep my mouth shut. So let me start by apologizing to Thelma, first of all. But I love the new Sea Sprite. What you guys have done, it's so dramatically improved. It's, you know, it's tremendous benefit to our community. Your investment is wonderful, the place looks great. We all have that nostalgia for the Sea Sprite, but let's admit it, the Mermaid and the Sea Sprite were maybe not the best establishments on the strand, no matter how much we miss them. Now, having said all of that, I go back to my original questions of staff and the city attorney. We are dealing, and the key here is this, let me go back one more step. If this were somewhere else in the right zone, that is, a zone that was, where the Sea Sprite belonged, or where a hotel or a motel belonged, I'd have no problem. We'd have been done and we'd have been down somewhere else having a cocktail now. But, that's not the case. We're dealing with a non-conforming use in a C1 zone. Now, the argument that the restaurant is an accessory to that, I buy the pre-breakfast I get when I go to the typical motel in their little, yeah, that's an accessory use. What I've heard tonight is several folks very articulately argue, this is a great restaurant, I want to be able to go there. Yes, the hotel's right there, but they're not looking at this as an accessory to the hotel. They're looking at this as a independent freestanding restaurant, which happens to be adjacent to a non-conforming hotel. We're treating this as though somehow this is a new and novel concept. It's not. It's a restaurant in the C1 zone. Now, we've started, my fellow commissioners appropriately, and the applicant himself have made concessions, that is, we are coming up with new conditions to try and address this. As though somehow that's a new problem. How would we condition a restaurant that serves full alcohol in a C1 zone? We could spend the next hour doing this. We've done this for, since 1907 in the city of Hermosa Beach. And in our zoning, we have come to the conclusion that in a C1 zone, there aren't appropriate conditions to allow that, and we simply don't allow it. The condition is, it's not permitted. Now, why is that? We can spend all night acting as though we don't know what the impacts of a bar that has full alcohol might be, what the impacts of an establishment that has outdoor dining and music might be. We've started to make, you see, we're starting to retrench back to, well, what if we change the hours? What if? We've done this game before and again and again and again, and the conclusion is always, we don't allow it. It's just that simple. We discussed the limited live entertainment. We don't allow that outside of an enclosed space in the C1 zone. Yes, we made exceptions during COVID. In some cases, folks have come to interpret that as it sort of just seems to have gone on, unenforced or unnoted. Since then, some of these cases that we look at are exceptional to the extent that they're in the public right of way versus in private property, and so they're under a different set of rules and so forth. I'm, I guess what I'm saying, and I guess it should be obvious, I'm not persuaded that as wonderful as this new establishment is, that the accessory use to it that we're trying to condition is in fact, I've had people, it's interesting, we've had people mention tonight that they've eaten there and how wonderful it is. I don't doubt that. I haven't had that opportunity myself, but I know lots of people that came to me, said, hey, have you been to the Surfer Girl? It's wonderful. I'm not, in my confused little brain, Atta Girl? Yeah, I heard that's, no, no, not Atta Girl, that's a different place, Surfer Girl. Where's Surfer Girl? Well, you know, on the strand. Oh, it's by, the Sea Sprite, the Sea Sprite. It's not in the minds of many of the public. And the argument that Mr. Burry always articulate made, wants to be able to go back, and you want him to go back and in the past served people that weren't guests and would prefer to continue to do that. That just simply confirms in my mind, okay, we're dealing with a restaurant in the C1 zone that happens to be adjacent to a hotel. How do we condition it? Well, let me look at the wisdom, oh, that's right, every council and every commission that's ever looked at this said, we don't. We simply don't allow it. One other comment, and I, and again, I'm saying this only for the sake of reiterating what I said earlier, the comment that we might, if we got music, we may never use it, that's always a red flag for me. Oh, you're looking for an entitlement that when your $15 million investment doesn't pan out and we want to sell it, we sell it with an entitlement that increases its property value. And again, I'm not accusing, but I'm simply indicating that's the kind of thing we have to consider when we approve a conditional use permit. It goes with the property, it doesn't go with this operator, any more than the previous one that we considered, many of you were here when we looked at Hotel Hermosa. So I guess what I'm saying is the obvious. I don't view this as an accessory use in the classical sense that I would say a breakfast bar in a motel. And I certainly didn't view live music, and maybe that's off the table, as being an accessory to that accessory. But then I'm going to go back to, everything that's been said about what a great place and how wonderfully remodeling and what you've done to that building is true, but let's not pretend like this is something other than what it is. An attempt to have an alcohol, full alcohol service in limited hour restaurant on the strand. I wish we had others. I wish you guys had taken the Mermaid over, had done this to the Mermaid. But that's not the case. This is in a C1 zone. I can't support it, obviously.
Well, I don't think there's any question or doubt about the operator's commitment and operations. I've enjoyed it and I enjoy the way it's operating right now with the Type 41, open to the public. I don't even mind spending $30 for a hamburger. But it's a wonderful asset to our community. My challenge is that in a C1 zone, this is not allowed. It's just simply not allowed. And if we were to move forward with this, there's four other properties within a three iron that are going to be standing in front of this committee. And we cannot have that. So, I enjoy going and I have enjoyed the passionate conversation tonight by both sides. And once again, to Ms. Roswell's comment, it's not a hotel. It is a motel. And a motel and a hotel are very different in their accessory, in the way that their amenities are performed for their customers and their guests, and the accelerated, the uses in which you can sell to the public. So they are very different properties. And Mr. Steve Rollins, you've got a liquor license and a full hotel. If you've worked with these guys to get that done, it was remarkable, and I commend you upon that. And I questioned the idea of a 47, not sure how we would even do that. I mean, we're in an impact zone. That would be a very, very big challenge, and I don't, I don't know why that is necessary for the continued operation. So, I enjoy the Sea Sprite and Surfer Girl as it is. If they wanted to make a change for removing the amplified music, I'm for that. Completely removing number eight on the resolution, I would like to join, I would like to be there, but at this point, I can't support it at this time.
So I was thrilled to see all the investment that's happened at the Sea Sprite over the last couple of years. And I don't know how it popped up on my Facebook or Instagram or something, but the advertisement for Surfer Girl had me so excited for another great destination and opportunity for my family to enjoy in Hermosa Beach. So have been really, really excited to see the evolution of what's happening there. You know, I've heard a lot of the pros and cons tonight, and I appreciate the applicant's flexibility in the application to address some of the concerns that have been brought up by the residents and surrounding neighborhood. And, you know, I guess I go back to, I really appreciate that fellow Commissioner Hoffman brought up the, you know, the discussion around the C1 zone, because I think that that's a really important component to this conversation and this debate. But I guess where I'm landing is in a different spot, because what I heard was, you know, by right, you're allowed to have a restaurant in a C1 zone. You're allowed to have beer and wine indoor, you're allowed to have indoor music. You require CUP, which is why the applicant is here, to have outdoor beer and wine, to have outdoor music. And then I've also heard from staff that, you know, this isn't a restaurant, this is a hotel, then the restaurant is an accessory use to hotel. And this hotel has, it's existing non-conformant, non-conforming, i.e. has been grandfathered in and was grandfathered in as a hotel use that was able to sell alcohol. So, I have, I have landed in a place where I feel that staff has done a diligent job in the analysis on what existing non-conforming uses are and what is allowed. This is not a new development. This is an existing project that has been enhanced and is enhancing our community. And I agree with some of the further mitigation measures that my fellow commissioners have suggested and the applicant has suggested with regards to trying to minimize noise through reducing the amplification of music or eliminating it, reducing the hours of the live music to be played. And, you know, I think if the existing business is operating till 10:00 PM indoor and outdoor... And, you know, I think if the existing business is operating until 10:00 PM indoor and outdoor, that's a further mitigant to impacts in the neighborhood. So, you know, I think that it's a really great asset to our community. I welcome it. And, you know, I will support the project with those modifications if someone brings a resolution or a motion forward.
Chair Hirsch, let me try a motion and see if it gets a second and so on. So I move approval of staff Resolution 25-12, which is to approve a conditional use permit allowing outdoor dining. However, strike the word amplified in that sentence, that first sentence, as well as the project is categorically exempt from SEQA. Now, the conditions that I would hope my fellow commissioners would support is, number one, a new floor plan showing the area where the music is to be played needs to be submitted. Secondly, I think local residents ought to be able to go there for a meal. So I'm going to recommend that we delete it entirely, Section 3.8. Number four, no amplified music. Number five, all music stops at 6:00 PM, Sunday through Saturday. So that would be my, I'm moving that along with the specific modifications that I just mentioned.
Any thought of the hours of operation changes other than this 6:00 PM on live entertainment? We have three categories, outdoor, indoor, and live.
So the indoor is from 7 to midnight, but if it's indoors...
Well, if you look, if I can just have a conversation here. When you look at the property, one of the values of the property is how open it is. You walk through, windows are open, large doors are open. You walk through down at the outdoor patio. You walk upstairs to the upstairs viewing area. The music is going to be located so it's aimed outside. If, you know, what we have handled on Pier Avenue on numerous occasions, how we dealt with the noise, those businesses had to get air conditioners because we told them to close their doors. That's how we solved the noise problem on Pier Avenue. All the windows and all the doors had to be closed, and they had to buy air conditioners. It was a big deal. This is not a business where even non-amplified music is not going to be carried. That's why it's going to be located where it's being located, so it carries outdoors. I don't have an answer to that. I'm just saying, I think there has to be some maintenance on the owner's part to keep the doors closed. They did an excellent job of refining their existing, what we call amplified music. The speakers are small. They're 10 by 10 by 10. They're located in different areas. They no longer broadcast through the neighborhood, which were some of the complaints we heard. They're at an ambient sound that when I walked through, I could hear it, but you had to be at a table or a chair close enough to it. So noise has always been one of the issues of a bar restaurant. So they're obviously, like he said, the hotel is their major opera. This is not like a regular restaurant where we had a ratio of food to alcohol, and we monitored it. The hotel itself is the big kahuna that brings in the money. Why the 70, 60, or whatever the percentage was, the alcohol was obviously higher than the food. I'm only comfortable with the going from a 41 to the 47, which was a big jump in our world for many years here, going from beer and wine to full alcohol. I'm only comfortable because of the reflection of keeping it low-keyed. So when the original reports came in that there was noise coming from the establishment with just a beer and wine, it made me have some concern. But I agree with most everything you said.
Well, Commissioner Fowler, sorry to interrupt, but specifically, you're looking at the hours of operation. Are you suggesting that the indoor be limited to 10 o'clock?
As they're doing today, as they admit to.
And the outdoor dining stays at 10 o'clock?
Yes, so everything is at 10.
That would be acceptable to me as the maker of the motion, and I'm still looking for a second.
I'd still like to go back to Section 3, Item 20, about the pursuit of a 47. It just changes the environment quite a bit. And I want to get counsel from my other commissioners on how you feel about that so I can come to a better conclusion.
Well, my feel of this property is that it's not a bar. It's a hotel with accessory compliments. I jokingly would say, to solve the C1 issue, you want to rezone it? Spot-zone it?
Next time.
Yeah, next time. Knowing that we're not going to do that, knowing that we have never spot-zoned anything, it is adjacent to, I mean, their final property is adjacent to the other C2 areas anyhow. Flippantly, I said, you want to rezone it to solve some of our issues, but that won't do it. I'm not afraid of keeping it beer and wine and allow them to apply at a later time. But wow, what steps would one have to do to come back again to ask for, as illustrated, our hotel down on Hermosa Avenue that went through five, six, seven years
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
of requests several times up to here to get alcohol to begin with in the rooms, and then get alcohol to be served, and we're talking...
Well, that was a workaround. They were trying to get the 66 to...
Right.
And then they had the 72 do their, and, you know, I don't want to sit through another workaround. I want to just say, let's move forward and/or no.
It's my understanding that with a 47, you basically, you apply and then you have to buy one. So I, right? And that's like $100,000. So who's going to do that if they don't have a CUP to actually use it? I feel like the CUP comes first, and then the 47 comes second.
I'm open to allowing them to investigate that because I was under the impression that you had to buy one in this region, in Hermosa Beach. You couldn't just get one from outside the county or in the lottery and have it approved. Is that the way I understand it here?
I can't find, I don't know.
Commissioner McNally, maybe you mentioned going to a 47. So the city and this commission over the last couple of years has, I hate to use the word soften, but has looked more closely at each individual project. And an example that I will give you is that a few months ago, Rockefeller's came to us.
Yep.
And said, we'd like a 47. And some of us, you know, a couple of Tuesdays ago, went there for the $2 burgers. We're not going to get them tonight because the kitchen's closing. No Brown Act violations were, but we actually made the observation. This is, this is great. This is working out for these guys. I feel the same way about this particular operation. Things aren't going to go to hell in a handbasket just because they're serving hard liquor, not for this operation.
Okay. Well, as I've stated with the previous applicant, I don't want to be in the way of their success and recognizing this would be an enhancement to their business. But as my colleague here said, that's a, that's a big asset at the end game. So is it... Okay.
Well, we have a motion.
We have a motion, and I'm looking for a second.
And we... Make one more comment as we discuss that, so that it's clear, and I should make this clear. Because we are now treating this as a CUP request, not as a use variance.
Yes.
Then we have to make the mandatory findings. And accepting the resolution is confirming that. My objection is I can't make the finding number three. And even though we have conditioned it, and now notice that my colleagues are still continuing to debate what conditions we can use to try and mitigate the impacts, I would argue again, or suggest simply, that every time this has ever been discussed in the history of Hermosa Beach, when it comes to the C1 zone, we've agreed there isn't sufficient mitigation to do it, and therefore, we don't allow it. Now, I appreciate that we're pretending, in my words, that this is an accessory use, and it's somehow different than were this an independent restaurant. I've just heard everyone say, let's make sure it's open to the public. We've already tried to propose that we scratch number eight. Well, how is that accessory to the hotel at that point? You're not serving the hotel. You're serving me or Mr. Berry when we stop by for a shrimp cocktail. But again, just so it's clear, make finding number three.
I wonder if the staff could continue to justify it, because obviously, the staff has had this before them, before we had it last week, for many months. Did you review, or I realize now what the city attorney has told us is accessory. You didn't think it was accessory to accessory to accessory. You only felt it was accessory. So why don't you kind of expand on that?
Sure. My pleasure, Commissioner. So in determining, again, that we're not accessory to accessory to accessory, taking a look again at our C1, C2, and C3 matrix. If we consider this a restaurant use, this an accessory restaurant use, alcohol service for restaurants is permitted in the C1 zone. So that's how we get to the point where we're not stacking accessory after accessory after accessory. Didn't hear you.
Beer and wine is permitted in the C1 zone.
Beer and wine.
But not on service full alcohol.
I would venture to disagree, Commissioner. There is, I believe, and again, I could be wrong. I'm sorry to challenge you on the battlefield like this.
No, and I don't mean to play gotcha here.
No, of course not.
We can look at the matrix. And 17-26-030, the matrix, C1, on-sale alcohol, on-sale alcohol not permitted.
Yes. So I believe you're referencing to the very top of the matrix. I'm looking at a different portion of the matrix that specifically looks at restaurant uses. So perhaps this is where a bit of miscommunication on behalf of staff occurred.
So the matrix that we put out to the public online is incorrect?
It's not that it's incorrect. It's that the matrix distinguishes between on-sale alcohol use, which includes things like bars, like clubs, that don't necessarily have to serve food as part of their service. Those are a particular type of on-sale alcohol establishment and restaurants that also provide on-sale alcohol.
Well, again, we, I think your interpretation of mine is different because I've been looking at the city code as it's presented to the public.
And I respectfully take that criticism, and if there are portions of the code that we can clarify and bring to city council, absolutely advocate for that clarification because it's clearly something that we are encountering today. The portion that I'm looking at, just for clarification, on the matrix is under Restaurant. We have multiple uses. Restaurant with on-sale alcohol beverages limited to beer and wine, closing at 10. Alcohol, restaurants with alcohol, beer and wine, closing after 10. We also have just Restaurant Cafe, and then we also have Restaurant Cafe with beer and wine, parentheses, on-sale alcohol beverage establishment. And the definition of an on-sale alcohol beverage establishment does include spirits. So we're getting into the weeds here a little bit. But that's just further explanation as to what helped me distinguish that this is not an accessory to accessory to accessory stacking, but that the code does provide, within the C1 zone, that restaurants can serve beer, wine, and alcohol.
I certainly, okay, I'll have to take your word for it because I can't believe my own eyes, apparently.
Madam Chair.
Ask Greg your question, please.
Sure.
Greg, why don't you do a deeper dive on your opinion of jumping from beer and wine to full alcohol? How you feel it's that big of a step?
I do, because what the applicant said was that their food to beer/wine sales, in my opinion, or my understanding, don't qualify them of that. You have to have, the idea of an on-sale beer/wine eating establishment has to have a percentage of alcohol to beer, alcohol to food sales. And you can't miss that. And if you go to a 47, then it's going to exacerbate that situation.
Does it cost?
Yeah. And I would like for them to have it. I would like for them to be successful. But I also know that there's going to be others that are going to ask us why this was allowed here and not there.
And historically, as we point out clearly, there were periods of time over my last 15 years up here is, there were a lot of places that we had them put on their training wheels first. And Rockefeller's being one. They established their history. They established their management style. And when they came forward, there were a lot of places that asked for full alcohol, and we denied it. But there were places that we felt had moved the needle enough. So, and guess what? It's a 10 o'clock closing for those places that newly got their full alcohol.
And I believe this applicant also would reasonably work within that. I'll tell you, this has been a big problem for our city for a long time. We're back into a safer, I wouldn't say safe, a better place with, because we have more professional operators. You guys are in that class. We just have to look down the road if you weren't the operator anymore and what that new operator might, might do. So that's, that's our struggle, but we want you to be successful and working hard to make the right decision.
Couldn't we condition, couldn't we condition that? Like, you know, what are we worried about the other operator might do? Couldn't we condition that through the CUP? What are we worried about what a future non Sea Sprite current operator might do?
Well, making it, for me, getting back to the words that we use, accessory. The restaurant itself is an accessory to the hotel. That's how we started on this. Opening it up to the public brings out a great point. It may not be accessory to the public. But as this, for me, as a resident, having this wonderful new establishment would be a loss for the rest of the city if you weren't allowed to enjoy it. I don't want it, I do not want it to turn into a bar as we have on Pier Avenue. I think by having tighter hours would help on that area. Not having amplified music would help on that area. I know that we're going past the point of recognizing the argument of what can be allowed in the C1. Now we're just negotiating how softly we can land this so that we feel comfortable moving forward. So again, I'd like to, now that I hear Greg's argument or statements, I feel very comfortable about the hours of operation all stopping at 10. No amplified music, open to the general public. It establishes a new venue for Hermosa, which is desperately needed in the downtown to reestablish itself. So those are my comments, and I think... So those are my comments, and I thank you for all the time you allowed me to talk at.
And in addition, if they are able to achieve a 47, there will be a CUP attached to that. So it'll be, it'll be reviewed.
So Chair Hirsch, just from a technical standpoint, I have made a motion to move, approve 25-12 with five modifications, just to review. First is a new floor plan that shows where the music folks would be. Secondly, to delete Section 3.8 in its entirety. Third, no amplified music. Fourth, music hours stop at 6:00 PM, seven days a week. Number five, indoor operations cease operation at 10:00 PM. Those are my five suggested modifications.
All right, there's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been motioned and seconded, can we open it for a vote?
Voting is open.
I don't think voting is open yet, at least not on any of our computers.
I don't, oh, here it is, I got my.
Motion carries 4-1 vote.
All right, thank you. All right, we're going to move on to item number eight, 8A, Community Development Director Report.
Thank you, everybody.
In the interest of time, I'll just say thank you so much for the really thoughtful and extensive deliberation this evening. Really helps me to understand you all, how you think, how you make decisions, the depth of your knowledge of the code and things that we need to be working on in the future. So appreciated that. Want to let everybody know that we're going to continue with modified counter hours on Wednesdays. We did a great push this first month with our document destruction project. Melanie, how many boxes did we process for shredding?
We did 12.
12 boxes.
12 of how many?
Of 300.
Okay.
So.
Those boxes combined, 75.
Yeah. Yeah, so, and as we get with it, we'll get faster. And anyway, so we also haven't really heard any negative feedback on the reduced hours on Wednesdays. So we're going to carry that forward for another month, we'll keep you posted. One other thing I'll just mention in closing, we did put together a customer survey. So anyone no longer in the audience, anyone who visits our counter and would like to take a minute and a half to share their thoughts about how we're doing, obviously, we would appreciate it. Thank you so much.
All right. Moving on to item nine, Planning Commission Comments. Any comments from my fellow commissioners?
I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but last meeting, Senior Commissioner Hoffman expressed his disappointment, and it gave me time to reflect on what that really meant, and I appreciated his statement. I think we were talking about opportunities that we missed up on the highway of getting some sort of development that didn't fully, took advantage of some issues that we could have gotten some credit for. In both places, we missed out on certain opportunities there. And so that made me think about tonight and its presentation. Several months ago, we had a police officer, police captain, the assistant chief, came up to us and asked us if we would rethink our position on how we did our quarterly reviews and so on and so forth. He asked us to reduce it down to once a year. Took me a while to bite into that, but I did. And then just a short while later, it went to, as part of a document to the council, our planning minutes. They eliminated it entirely. So I think the appropriate time to have those type of statements by the police department, as much as you worked hard on these two items tonight, I think the appropriate time for a more fleshed out report from the PD especially is at least a paragraph from them that says, hey, we had 16 or no incidents and so on and so forth. I'm glad staff had some information of what was feedback so far on this particular thing. But I think there's a loss if we don't get, on a report like these two, where we're dealing with alcohol for the first time or the second time around, that we get a more fleshed out report in our staff report. Even if the verbal one, pre-prepared, maybe not in writing, but a verbal one that encapsulates the minutes you took at the police department, where it says, okay, we looked at all the reports. I think that's where the research and the reporting and the incident is filed. And I'm sure they're still doing reports, they have reports over there. They just don't file them and make a presentation. That's what their complaint was, they had, really, that was a lot of work for them to produce, both our staff and their staff. But this, these incidents where we're dealing with alcohol really need a more defined focus. Give us that information because I can tell you, I was there, Pete and I were there in 2020 when the reports came in, and a number of police incidents caused us to have, first, no alcohol, then we agreed to internal alcohol, and now eventually it's outside. But we caused them not to put it on the patio because of all the incidents that happened up there. That was what I remember distinctly, the number of calls that they were receiving and police reports about noise and other activities and so on and so forth, so.
Commissioner, thank you.
Thank you for giving me that energy, Mr. Hoffman, to say what I regret.
Yeah, no, I just want to kind of confirm that we have been, as staff, looking at a number of different things, including the staff report, particularly for conditional use permits. And kind of in light of this change that has happened with reporting, finding a way to add that into our standard template for these types of cases. So more to come on that. But thank you for raising it, and please know that it is on our radar. And you'll see maybe some additional information coming your way soon.
Just to add to that, I think something, you know, that used to happen was, we used to have representation from the police department here for cases that dealt with alcohol. So I don't want to consume their time, especially with long meetings. But it was really beneficial to us, for us to hear it as a commission, what the department's perspective was and the research that they had done and the input that they had on those, those proposals.
Mm-hmm. I mean, do know that we hold bi-monthly meetings, interdepartmental meetings with the police department. And we do a lot of internal discussions as we're formulating our conditions of approval. And if there's ever a hesitation on their part, you know, however they feel it needs to be conditioned, that's what we're bringing forward to you. But certainly, you know, we can alert them to, you know, your request to have them come and be present.
Any other comments from Planning Commission? All right, moving on to number 10A, Future Agenda Items. The Planning Commission tentative Future Agenda 25-CDD-116. Do, I have a motion to receive and file, is that what this one is? Okay.
If I can just quickly just remind the public as well as the commission, there's two meetings in September, so you'll be meeting on September 8th, Monday, special meeting, 6:00 PM start. And then your regular meeting of September 16th, also 6:00 PM start.
So are we receiving and filing both of those?
Yes, it's just one document at this point, but yes.
Yeah, okay. Do I have a motion?
It's a move. Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Vote.
Voting is open.
Can we take a verbal vote?
Commissioner McNally?
I'm sorry, I was daydreaming for a minute.
Receive and file the future agendas. Oh, okay, we're good.
I thought, yeah, I thought I voted on it already.
Yep.
Motion carries 5-0.
All right.
Thank you for the help.
All right, and now on to item number 12, Adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, meeting is adjourned, thank you.